Good afternoon, welcome to a special called meeting of the mayor and city council of the city of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. We do not have a quorum present at this time. Council members Clay and Allen are present, so I cannot call the meeting to order at this time, but there is no action that will be taken during this meeting. So we will proceed with the discussion, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Hawthorne.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to the mayor and councilors and the staff and any public that may be here or observing. So this is a very important obsession, and I'm going to take care of a couple of house cleaning issues. We have a new setting. We have different information that is at each person's seat that I want to make sure that everybody knows what you've got before you, and then I'll walk you through the rest of the program. So let's start with the materials that you have at your place. The first being the first quarter review budget book. And if you could open that document to page one, I'm going to spend just a little bit of time on it, giving you the highlights of what's in the document. So on page one, we have the table of contents, which really gives you the breakdown of what we're going to be doing. There are three major parts today. You've got included in this document the city manager letter, and I'm going to give a broad overview of what's in the letter. Obviously, everybody's had a chance to review it or can review it in the future. Financial overview that will be given. And then we have department needs assessment that will also be discussed by individuals on the programs. Now you've got some handouts, and let's start with the one dislabeled fiscal year 2024 first quarter budget review schedule, because we do have a tight timeline, and I'm going to try and stay on schedule. I appreciate the mayor starting on time. I've got until approximately 2:15 before I turn it over to Ed Wall for the financial overview. And you see that listed on the program. So obviously, the mayor is the chair of the meeting, will hopefully help us stay close to schedule. Staff has been instructed, they're going to give brief overviews so that we have sufficient time after each department has made all of their budget modification requests, presentations for questions of the mayor and council. I do want to speak to the colors that you see on this document. If you look down at the bottom of the page, you see the legend, and the legend is based on the strategic goals, and by those colors, the departments align to all of the goals, but there is a central goal that each department can probably relate it as representing more of. And so that primary color is represented. So that's the overview of the schedule and basically the order that we're going to go in. Perhaps with the exception of information technology, Michael will be able to cover some of his items, at least one or two, that I don't think is super sensitive for discussion, but he will have some items at the end of the discussions to go over with you related to security issues. The next document that I'd like to bring your attention to is the one that says fiscal year 2024 budget modifications. This is a very important sheet, and it does a few things, actually. Again, it's broken down by departments and that main strategic goal that each department is aligned to. So you have a summary here on this one page of all of the requests that are in your book and will be using the book, essentially walking page by page. But when all is said and done, both the mayor and council in particular and the city manager, because I haven't prioritized at this point, I need to hear more, I need to hear the discussions of the mayor and councilors, and then I will present my recommendations by next Monday. So you will note that there is a budget book page number reference, but I also need to point out to you the second column from the right. So you've got the departments, and department names are abbreviated, and because I'm recommending the formal creation and codification of departments, this will also be an exercise for you to hear the recommendations of the new names and any changes in primary functional responsibilities. On the budget requests that departments have presented, by department, they have and will be reviewing with you in rank order their requests. And again, you see that from this big page as opposed to in individual workbooks, even though they shouldn't be in the order that you see listed here. Then, of course, the title of the request is something simple to help you remember each request. The next column is important because this number, annual cost, isn't reflected on the workbook necessarily. In some cases, we have prorated the costs that would be needed for fiscal year 24 because these would be budget amendments. So the full year's cost wouldn't necessarily be incurred in fiscal year 24, but obviously the mayor and council should know what the annualized costs would be where the annualized cost is applicable or recurring. And now let me make some brief comments on the importance of this exercise. So at this point in my tenure, I've been here six months as your new city manager, and I will call myself the new city manager for at least a year because I'm still learning, and this is only a six-month assessment. But it is an honest assessment that I've relied upon the community building leadership team. My approach isn't to keep information from the mayor and council. If department directors make me aware of it, chances are you're going to hear directly from them. My recommendations will be something different because I have to take more into account. But in the six months that I've been here, at the top of anything that I do, and certainly anything that I recommend, it is premised primarily on two documents. The city charter, and I will often reference the city charter. It guides me. I refer to it on a daily basis, and we all know the importance of the city charter, our highest form of local law. And the strategic plan that the mayor and council in 2020 revised, and even as recently as this year revised further with the core values. So I want to start today's session by recognizing what today and what this exercise over the last several weeks and even several months is premised on. So I'm going to reference the city charter numerous times. Section 47 of the city charter provides, as the chief administrative officer of the city of College Park, the city manager shall have power and it shall be his or her duty to keep the mayor and council fully advised as to the financial condition and needs of the city. Fully advised, so it's important that you hear it all. And we've got needs. A primary reason that we're here today is because of the organizational realignment that I've discussed with the mayor and council from the early days of my tenure, receiving direction for all that we're going through. So the charter says one thing at a very high level, but the mayor and council gave me specific direction within the first month of my tenure to schedule this needs analysis, this budget review. But with regard to the organizational realignment, in section 46 of the city charter, the title being responsibility, the city manager shall devote his full time and attention to the affairs of the city and shall be responsible to the mayor and council for the efficient administration of all the affairs of the city over which he has jurisdiction, efficient administration being important. Further prescribed, section 47 powers duties, as the chief administrative officer of the city of College Park, the city manager shall have power and it shall be his or her duty to see that the business and affairs of the city are efficiently organized and handled and to appoint as required department heads for departments authorized by the mayor and council. I can't find that document. I know in our practice and our budgets, departments certainly are recognized, but it hasn't been codified.
Mr. Hawthorne, let me interrupt you for just a moment. Councilman Carn has arrived, so we do have a quorum, and so I'm calling the meeting to order at 2:11 PM.
And so now, just briefly talk about the organizational realignment in my three minutes that are left. On page six of your document, this is the real essence of the needs assessment that has been done. So I want to formally introduce you, and I'm going to call out the names of the various directors of the departments that are proposed for codification at your October 16 meeting. These are the departments that are created. There are some offices that you will see listed above the departments, including the city manager's office, city attorney, airport and governmental affairs, municipal court, which is the common change in the charter. That's not the areas that we're addressing today. The city clerk's office and public affairs, Chevila Ames, a major change, strategic communications being in office and being under Chevila Ames' charge. Human resources and risk management, Dr. Dwight Baker. No primary changes, but each director will certainly give you whatever overview that they choose to share. Information technology, Michael Hicks, no major change in this realignment. Finance department, purchasing and contracts is something that I want to speak to and that Ms. Flor Bradley will speak to. Parks, recreation and cultural arts, parks is important, is mentioned in the charter, but not recognized in a department, and there are some deficiencies in our parks. Building and property sustainability, known as inspections today. You're going to see sustainability a couple of times. It is what we should be striving for in all that we do, from planning and development to what we have to monitor to ensure quality of life, particularly in the dwellings that our neighbors live. That's Marcus Robinson. And if I didn't mention Michelle Johnson on the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts, that was an oversight. These are some key areas that need addressing. This is an important department. In fact, I give the opposite. And how does a city mature? Where do we go? Six West, glamorous, what we've got, buildings and structure and property, some areas of town, some major issues. This is a key department, and I really want you to hear strongly what has been recommended. Public works, some changes such as facilities and fleet. Water and sewer is an area of concern that we're not going to get into because we're basically focusing on the general fund today. It is an area of concern for the future, along with stormwater. Engineering and infrastructure, Mohaddeen Bahari, public works I should have mentioned, Dr. Emmanuel Adedidurn. I've got major concerns in the engineering area and the absence of internal engineering and the absence of internal inspections, building inspections, and I'll get to the absence of internal planning. It's caused some deficits in this organization and in this community. You're going to hear some of that through these presentations today. This presentation today, needs assessment, does not address on any comprehensive level what I call community investment, capital projects. We're probably talking about tens of millions of dollars by the time we're ready for the next budgeting cycle. We've got needs if we're to be the best that we're going to be. Police, no major changes. When it's recorded, something that will be addressed in the coming month or two. Fire rescue, there will be some attention on emergency medical rescue and what it takes for the chief to deliver the best service, competing with other organizations. We're not discussing enterprise funds and no major changes under power to be known as electric power. It's recommended. Sustainable development, and in the absence of Michelle Alexander and Hugh Richardson I should have mentioned for electric power, and Wade Elmore for fire rescue, and Conny Rogers for police. Sustainable development, it's not economic development, it's far more than economic development. What's being proposed? We need to talk to you about housing, planning and zoning, the development authority, BIDA, and the convention center, arena and golf enterprises. And with that, the next order, I'll turn it over to Ed Wall, who's going to give you the financial overview, and then we're going to proceed with the departmental needs assessment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne. For everyone here, there was a fold out in front of your book, and it's entitled Financial Overview. If you turn on the back, it's very well done. Normally, I give you eight and a half by 11 pages, so this, thank you, Mr. Hawthorne, this is awesome. Everybody have it in front of them? So I'd like to highlight the format of it. So College Park is a collection of businesses. Today, we're talking about the general fund, but you all know you have all these other various different funds, and like Coca-Cola rolls their entire operations up into one financial statement. You don't do that. You have each individual fund, and they're each operated separately as their own business. The general fund is what we're here to talk about today. This is organized, you can see the actual 2020, I'm at the top of the page, the actual 21, actual 22. Skip over to the estimated 23, and then in the far right, you'll see the adopted 2024 budget. So I'd like to go back to start with the actual 2020. Look at the total revenue line. In 2020, it had 26.4 million in revenues. The pandemic, COVID, hit March of 2020. Look at 21, was $28 million in revenues. 22, we're still in the pandemic, only $29 million in revenues. Look at estimated 23, you have $34 million in revenues, 3.6 million more than budget. I'll get to that in a minute, but you can see how the revenues were impacted during the pandemic, and you are now coming out of it, and your revenues are so much greater than what we had predicted by about 10%. Let's go to the expenditures, go down to the bottom, the total expenditure line. So in 2020, the pandemic only hit the last three months of your fiscal year. Remember all these numbers of 12 months as of June 30th each year? So in 2020, your expenses were $33.1 million, as you can see the revenues at the top were only $26 million. Go to the next line, 21, look how y'all cut expenses in 21 because of the pandemic, they're down to $28.3 million, closely matching your budget at the top of revenues. Then in 22, $29 million in revenues, closely matching, I mean, $29,493,000 expenses, closely matching the revenues. And go over to estimated 23, $35 million, but look just to the left of it, the budget was $40 million. So you had $6.7 million to the good in expenses for 2023. So let's now dive into that and talk about it a minute. Go back up to the top, and let's take the revenues one by one. Taxes were budgeted $25 million, we received $27 million, and that's property and local option sales taxes, some other taxes as well, but total taxes were $1.006 million. That negative for the revenue line is a positive. Look at license and permits, it was $4 million budgeted, we got $5.5 million, that was $1.005 to the good. And so the total revenues were $3.006 million, better than we had budgeted. Let's go to the expenditures. The big one is police. We budgeted $15 million in this estimated line. You know, the auditors haven't made all the journal entries, but this is what Ms. Flor Bradley believes the results will be at June 30th, 2023. We saved $4.2 million from the budget in police. Now, mayor and council, would you hazard a guess as to why that is the case?
Salaries from open positions.
And vacancies. There are a lot of vacant positions. Merely, all of my clients are having a hard time filling positions in public safety. So that, say, ma'am?
Oh, I gotta hold it. Let me add that $1.4 million in salaries was moved to the grant fund to cover for ARPA revenue that came in. So the police department revenue is showing $1.4 million less in expenses because those expenses are being recognized under the ARPA grant fund.
Thank you, ma'am. And so I want to highlight that savings, we don't expect it to continue to be a savings. Notice your 24 budget just next to it is the same $15 million almost that we had in the 23 budget. So you're expecting in 24, those vacant positions will get filled. The same thing goes for fire, the next line down, $9.3 million in budget, 6.5 in actual, it's vacant positions. Notice the 24 budget has that same $9 million. So let's keep on going down the page under the column, estimated 23. Let's look at the transfers. It's called other financing sources and uses. I'm on the estimated 23. The first number is $6,555,000, it's a transfer in. We go down there to the bottom, and you can see that the transfers in, I'm sort of a paragraph up from the bottom, transfers in, you can see $1,566 from car rental, $1,002 from the electric fund, $1,001 from the FAA fund, and $4,411 from hotel motel tax fund. We're so lucky that in 23, all of our revenues sort of came back to pre-pandemic levels, and you were able to do things like you did back in 2019. So let's go back up to the top, the middle, I'm at other financing sources and uses. You can see that the total net of the transfers were $7,471, and the net change in fund balance was $8,846. Now, that number will be adjusted when the auditors come in with journal entries, but for figuring purposes today, the closest we can get is $8,846. Go back to the left, look under 22. We had $6.8 million that we added to fund balance in 22. And then to the left of that, you can see in the teeth of the pandemic, you actually spent $4,400,000 of fund balance, and you actually spent $1,007,000 of fund balance in 2020. So let's go back to estimated 23. I've got five minutes. Estimated 23, $8,846. You started out the year with a fund balance of $23 million, and you ended the year with a fund balance of $32 million. Mr. Hawthorne, in his book that he sent to you, had a pretty great description after he had listed the 24 budget of how the auditors take that and figure out what's restricted and unrestricted, unassigned, assigned. I've done it a little bit differently here, Althea and I have. I'm adjusting that $32 million to get to cash. You all are familiar, this is about the fourth year in a row. We used to do it during the pandemic every quarter, but you know, there's a lot of funds that owe the general fund money, and so we book it as an asset, and it's in fund balance, but it's not cash available to you until we sell land and pay that back or the electric fund starts earning money. And again, I want to stop, just make a brief thing. You all did hard things in June of 2020. You raised the electric rates, you raised water and sewer rates, you raised sanitation rates, you actually had to raise the millage rate last year. You all, as a manager of the operational enterprise of College Park, did hard things in order to restore the finances of the city during the pandemic because so much of our revenue depends on tourism, on hospitality, on the Atlanta Airport, and we really caught the flu when everybody else caught the cold during the pandemic. But those things that you did have affected the financial health of the city of College Park. And as you go forward in the future, I would expect these negatives, which are things that are owed to the general fund, to go down to zero, and you'll get paid back these things. But when we make the adjustments in 23, you can see there, your cash balance, real cash it's called, is $21,408. How I, as your financial advisor, how the credit rating agencies, investing public view that, what is that as a percentage of your budget? Well, go up to adopted 2024 budget, you can see the total expenditures are $43,026. So you have real cash equal to about half of your annual budget, so that's 50%. You all have a policy of having 30% to 60% as a fund balance. So you're at 50%, and the top end of your policy is 60%. You all, a lot of times, I deal in hypothetical, why do you need a fund balance? You all know firsthand why you have to have one, because you used $7 million of it during the pandemic. If it hadn't been there, we'd had to do a tax anticipation note. And so you all have done a fabulous job, and I've been right there with you along the way. I can't tell you how great a job you've done during the pandemic. 23 shows that you're beginning to come out of it. And so you have $21 million of cash on a $43 million budget. This 24 budget is, as adopted, is balanced. Revenues, including the transfers in, meet your expenses. Let's go up to the top page real quick, the $27,714 is the taxes. Included in that is property taxes. That was budgeted in June before we had the final tax digest, and it was budgeted $13.619 mils. Should you choose to go down one mil to $12.619 mils, because the tax digest was greater than predicted, that $12.619 mils will still bring in the amount of money in this budget plus about $190,000. Now, as you go through the rest of today's meeting, you will have a choice to make. Do you leave that one mil and do some of the 56 items that is on the list that is before you, or do you lower the millage rate by one mil from $13.619 to $12.619? The metrics or your decision-making process, I think, would be if you take that $1,002 out of the budget, it'll be less stuff that you can get done. So you, as a mayor and council, have to weigh whether you want to return that $1,002 to the taxpayers, or would you like to take the $1,002 and do projects and services? But you have $21 million in fund balance as cash that is also available for some of these projects as you go over. It'll be up to you as to whether you want to lower it from $21 million to something less, or if you wanted to wait until the fund balance gets greater and spend some of that. How will the fund balance get greater? You'll continue to earn excess revenue over expenses that will increase the fund balance, and you will sell property principally in Six West to increase the fund balance. I'm right at 2:30, Mr. Hawthorne.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Mr. Hawthorne, are we ready to move forward with Ms. Johnson?
Let me just give an instruction to everyone. You've got a microphone before you, but in order to speak, you have to press and hold while you speak. So we're going to start with Parks and Recreation. I would ask- I would ask that Mayor and Council hold their questions until after the full presentation is done by each department. But you can certainly take notes in your book or on the big spreadsheet that you've got before you. Department directors, remember to give the page number for easy following you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. With the new restructuring for the organization, parks would be listed under Recreation and Cultural Arts. So with that in mind was the budget modification for page forty-six would start with Parks and Fields Athletic Maintenance. And that would include cutting all the parks and the athletic fields. So with not having the equipment currently at that time, so we would recommend going with a contractor to do so. And that would be the current contractor that is ProCutters. Um, so that cost is two hundred and seventeen thousand and that includes other expenses for flowers, tree cutting, along with supplies that we would need for the park, along with anything replacement for benches and grills. So with that cutting, that would allow us to set up regular scheduled cuts during high season and then some maintenance during the off-season times. So that's what we're looking at with the Parks and Athletic Field Maintenance at the two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Then moving on to page forty-seven would be a park supervisor, someone to oversee the direct outside activities since currently just recreation has interior positions. So recommending to have a park supervisor to oversee the parks and see directly what would, those needs would be. And then on page forty-eight, um, looking at the two labor positions that had been into public works for upkeep, along with trash and cleanup during the day for the weekly. And that's two transferred labor one positions from public works over to Recreation and Cultural Arts with parks being added at eighty-eight thousand, I think, is that the correct amount? Yeah, eighty-eight thousand one forty-six with the estimated for the rest of the, the fiscal year. Then for page forty-nine, adding two park vehicles to help with those labor ones and supervisor out in the field in the parks at a hundred and fourteen. And with that cost being, oh, so that's a full one fourteen for the, um, the rest of the year for those park vehicles.
Michelle, I, I think we combined your vehicle requests. So I think this one represents four vehicles.
I apologize. You're correct. So that was two vehicles along with two types of ATVs or gators to help also assist with the next recommendation, which would be the park attendants. We'd like to change park rangers to a park attendant. So when we say park attendant, we're talking about the current park ranger positions that are hired during the seasonal time to change them to park attendant because we believe that a park attendant and a park patrol should be a two-person job, somebody to maintain the parks, clean up the parks, along with cleaning the restrooms, along with having somebody to monitor and keep the safety of the parks. So looking at these would be six year-round part-time positions, calling them park attendants. They would work basically seventy-two hours, mostly on the weekends, which is most of the busiest times during the weekends to be able to meet the needs of the park. Then we would have the park patrol position. This would be two part-time, year-round patrol positions to also mainly look at weekends, but oversight during the week also. But during that high season, having some visible police in the park at, at all times. And that's four, that was an estimated cost of the sixty-eight, six seventy-three for the rest of the year. Then moving on to some requests from council during the budget process was to resurface the track. This would be just taking the first top layer of the surface to redo and that is at ninety thousand dollars. And then on to page sixty-three is a request to update Phillips Park Playground with quotes for redoing that with removal was six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That is a substantial playground out there. So it is a, a, almost like three different separate playgrounds out there for that cost. And then the last request from, um, a, a council member was the Human Culture and Civic Program was expanding an ambassador program that was presented to Mayor and Council by Dr. Sisulo and that is at thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Questions? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
Okay, uh, my first question is, there's a lot of organizational changes here. So we're moving things from public works to recreation. We're moving things around in recreation. We're changing titles and so forth. Is the budget for public works going to go down by the same amount that is being moved into recreation? That's my first question.
And I, I can take that one. So at this point, and one of the reasons why my recommendations will come later is my recommendations will do what you're asking, Councilman Clay. These were requests as submitted by the departments. And even though they have factored in what the net effect would be to their budget, it's not necessarily reflecting the offset. So when my recommendations come, and let's say where there has been a transfer of positions, such as one of the requests indicated, then yes, that offset will be shown. The net effect in that example would be, even though it's showing a cost of approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars, there would be no, there would be no cost, but that will be reflected in my recommendations.
Okay, so we're not, we're not getting into the situation where we say, well, we're going to transfer two people over. But you know, those two people were doing some other. I've done a lot of organizational changes in my life. And, and these two people that were transferring over, they were doing some other things too. And, and those things aren't going to go away. Those are still in public works. So frequently, when you move people around, one of the problems you have is you don't end up with a, a net zero change. And, uh, I, I'm just wondering, has thought gone into that in this reorganization? That, and I'm not asking you to come up with a number now, but I am saying there's a tendency when you do this to not have an offset in the full value of what's moved over. So that's one of my concerns and that's something I want to be clearly addressed when we talk about this at the council meeting. I assume this will all come up. It's, I think it's at the work session.
Fully understand it. I agree with you.
So... I, I have a bunch of questions. The park supervisor. What, read what the park supervisor is supposed to do. I find it hard to believe that you had for forty-one, fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand dollars is not the full year cost. If you look at the fiscal year summary sheet with bu- budget modification, I have an annual cost and I basically have a cost of the onboarding this position, say sometime in December, January timeframe. So that is not the full cost of fifty-one thousand that you see. It's actually eighty-five, one fifty-five.
Okay, yeah. This is a little more complicated than, uh...
Need that companion document.
Yeah, I, I wish, I wish we had a video display here, but, uh, we'll make this work. So, okay, so now that answers my question on that one. The laborers, the laborers coming over for eighty-eight, one forty-six. So if I go down to party eighty-eight, one forty-six, I don't, oh, yeah, I see it now. That's the full year cost and that is dated as a full year cost.
The full year cost is a hundred and forty-six thousand.
Hundred and forty-six thousand, right.
Yes.
This, I'm sorry, not full year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four cost would be eighty-eight, one forty-six. Okay.
And that too wouldn't be a, um, an additional cost because the, the positions are fully funded under public works right now. It's more so moving them over. And when we do move them over, it'll be the eighty-eight thousand that moves over. But in the following year, if this is passed, a hundred, it would be a hundred and forty-six thousand would be the true annual cost. But it would have no net effect because it's already budgeted.
Okay, um, let's go on to the park vehicles. We've got a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and... Is that just the cost of the vehicles? Or is that the cost in operation of the vehicles? One of, one of the interesting things about this, this whole analysis that we're doing, that some of these things are quote, one-time costs. They're not really one-time because you refurbished the track and it's going to need refurbishing again in six years or eight years or what have you. So you could show an amortizer's cost over the, you know, over the years. But, but some things, like salaries, they're every year. There's no, no amortization. I mean, it's going to be a recurring expense. So of that hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, is that just the cost of the vehicles? Because it sounds to me like it could be. And what is the cost of fueling the vehicles? Maintaining the cost of vehicles at Moody's, uh, et cetera, et cetera?
So the cost in here currently now is the two vehicles at forty thousand and two ATVs twenty-four. So, and that was an eighty-eight, one forty-six. So there's additional cost added for, for that.
So you, so you have the cost in or you don't have the cost?
It, the, the cost of the vehicles is eighty-eight, one forty-six and there's additional cost in there. So there is cost.
So this includes the whole package?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and Councilman, I should tell you that even though this is a working document for you, what each department in making requests, they actually had to submit the detailed line items. So while you're not seeing that, it has been accounted for.
Yeah, that, I, that's part of my problem because I'm used to seeing all the detail and I, and I don't even have to ask the question. Okay, good. So the next one, the park attendants. Is the additional funding in the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars?
So the, the park rangers now, park attendants, were seasonal six months. So this is additional cost and it is, Althea, can you tell me if we, did we do this separate? We did, it's all included for the entire year. So it's an additional cost.
Okay. And on the officers or park patrol, it almost sounds like these guys are sworn. Are they sworn officers?
That's what we planned on, with sworn officers to be in the park to help maintain and keep security for the parks.
Okay, so you've got two of those. So these are guys are going to be moving between parks, for one thing. But on a given day, I mean, people have to have time off too. Uh, are, are you going to really have two officers or just one officer?
So typically what we look for, the officers, are the high seasons during the su- um, during the weekend and summer. So we would look during the weekdays, there is no rentals typically. So probably half of that, half of that day, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, whatever that high season or high, um, season.
So I'm, I'm having a little trouble unders- hearing you and understanding you, I guess. I can hear you, but I can't necessarily understand you. So you're saying that on the weekends and during high season, you would have two? And on weekdays, say on a Wednesday, you might not have any?
Correct.
Okay, so my next question would be for the police chief. And, and that would be, uh, if these are sworn officers, who, who takes care of their training and certification and the things that all make them sworn? Because sworn sure smells like a police officer, not a civilian.
The police department, we will handle all training for any sworn officer that works for the city. It's just as well as Sergeant Sparks, who falls up under, uh, the police department, but he works for the GICC. This would be the exact same scenario.
Okay, so that's the same arrangement you already have with the GICC.
Councilman Clay. Uh, the Recreation Department hires off-duty police officers for, for most of our activities on a regular basis. So we would be looking for the same type of police officer that we do for our football, for our basketball games, somebody to be hired on a regular basis year round.
So does this, are you saying these would be, this would be off-duty work for those police officers? Or regular, if, if police chief is saying, shaking her head, saying, yeah, it would be regular duty?
These officers would be hired under the preview of Parks and Rec. Uh, as far as their training, they will fall up under my preview, but they would take all direction and leadership from Parks and Rec.
Okay, chief, you're down staff. You're still down staff quite a bit, aren't you?
Negative, sir. We've only compared to when I started to now, we're only down sixteen officers.
How much?
Only sixteen.
You're down sixteen now?
Yes, compared to the thirty-six, yes.
Okay, so if you're down sixteen, how long will, are, are, is the intent then to fill the sixteen in police and then add two more to get to eighteen sworn officers, which you would have? Or are you going to divert some of those positions that you already have, that you haven't filled yet and that those positions then would go to rec?
Negative, sir. The, these positions would be open when, uh, uh, someone applied to the city of College Park. They will look on the human resources and it would say park patrol, recreation. They would take all interviews. All responsibility will fall on the rec. Only thing that I would do would add them to my roster as far as post to show that they are certified.
Okay, so they would actually, they would hire in to the Recreation Department, but you would make sure that they met all the qualifications?
That is correct.
Okay, so my next question is, now you can figure out what it's going to be. If we're still down sixteen police officers and we're having trouble getting those police officers, we've authorized those positions, correct? I mean, you'd like to fill those sixteen positions, wouldn't you?
We'll work them on. We won't be at sixteen alone.
No, I, I realize that. So what makes us think when someone comes in to hire that they will not hire into your police department, but instead they'll hire into the rec department?
This may be a certified officer who works for another municipality who's just looking for secondary work, uh, and they would be hired under the Parks and Rec. And with this added addition to Parks and Rec, they would actually free up, the city of College Park, police officers being called for the numerous of issues that we have during the parks, during peak hour, peak time of the year.
So we would be, these people, while they'd be in our employ, they'd also be in the employ of the city that they have normally worked for. Maybe South Fulton or East Point or what have you. And then they all gonna, they're going to hire in to you as a second job and, uh... uh, the chief will make sure that they're properly certified?
That is correct.
Okay, so does, that mean these people will carry weapons and what have you, just like a real police officer?
I would like patrol enforcers in the parks, correct? And a lot of the police officers have been off, uh, retired police officers that would come back for, this would be a part-time...
I'm with, I'm, I'm with you, okay, I can see. Resurfacing of the track, how many years was counsel told the previous surf, surfacing, uh, would last? I, it seems like it was supposed to last longer than it did.
The last time it was resurfaced was in two thousand and seventeen, that summer, and you normally get, uh, six to seven years out of the...
The six or seven years normal, is that what we expected?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm done.
Councilman Carron?
All right, I got a few things, uh, some of them Ambrose did cover, and start back here, top, the top. I got some of the same sentiment, I guess, you know, on the surface it looked like we're, you know, stealing from Peter to pay Paul in one sense, but I haven't seen what Public Works is looking at, or what, what they're gonna need. I guess theoretically speaking, I wanna look at how we're, how we're doing this, and, and Stanley, I guess you can help me out in one sense. There's been an ongoing debate with parks and rec and Public Works in terms of maintenance, lawn care, all of these types of things. Now, in my logical brain, I say to myself, well, Public Works is cutting grass all over the city right now, would it make more sense to bring on more Public Works folks to handle the grass in the parks, being that they're short people as is? This two-seventeen, this is an annual maintenance for, uh, for grass cutting in your parks, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else in that two-seventeen? Just that only?
Maintaining during the winter months, along with flowers, you know, upkeep, beautification of the parks.
Okay.
And I believe athletic fields, right? Athletic fields is in this number?
Correct, that's correct, so it's not just the parks, it's along with the athletic fields.
Right, right, parks and athletics fields, okay, understood. Well, you know, again, the thinking in my head would be why, you know, if we spend two-seventeen for contractors, when technically speaking, we could hire more staff that Public Works probably already needs, and a few more cutters and whatnot to handle the grass in the growth season, and when they're not doing the growth season, and the grass season, and the flowering season, and, and then such, that could be extra workers that Public Works needs desperately now, as opposed to contracting it out, so I don't know if...
Let me, let me address this one, because I think there's a bigger issue. And even in this scenario, what I told, uh, Michelle and, and Lance, and, and, mind you, these are departmental recommendations, mine may very well vary, but the issue I believe in College Park, and let's start with the omission of parks in any department, you will hardly find an organization across this country where parks is totally omitted, and I will tell you that when you talk about quality of life, parks, you have some services, parks, fire rescue, and libraries. These are the types of things, all of them are important, but often residents will tell you, neighbors will tell you, we'll pay the extra, we want the quality. I consider in College Park, from my assessment, that parks have been treated as a stepchild, and parks are different than the run-of-the-mill right-of-way. All of it is important, but it shouldn't be just cutting the grass. Parks requires, if it's going to be at its highest level, real attention and expertise, and it's more than cutting the grass. We've got parks that we're proud of, that our neighbors take care of, and one of the first issues that I faced when I was here, and I remember Michelle brought it to my attention, was the maintenance of bathrooms, and I know how Councilman Clay feels about Barrett Park getting bathrooms, but how we have treated the bathrooms, because there hasn't been true ownership, is shameful. I will tell you without names, we've lost an employee because they refused, because the conditions of the bathrooms were so, were so bad. So what I'm looking for, however it's done, and my recommendation is still to come, is that parks is owned, and usually, it's owned by Parks and Recreation.
And, and that makes good sense, obviously, Parks and Recreation would handle parks. Now, ten years ago, our parks were the envy of this metro region. Many, 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 many people chose to have their events, their reunions, their birthday parties in our parks, and we kept them absolutely impeccable. Now, I don't know exactly what happened to parks in one sense, but... Somebody used to supervise the parks, someone was the park supervisor. Who was that person? Who was that person? And who is that person? I guess, because somebody handled parks, we weren't, uh, well, we need a park supervisor, someone was supervising those parks, and somebody was supervising those parks well. What changed?
So I'm, in, in...
In terms of staffing, what, 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 what happened? I know Chuck, Chuck made a real insistence on making sure those parks were kept up to snuff, and when I got on board, so did I, but there had to be a park supervisor, there has to be one technically now. So, so who is that person, and who was that person? And did, did, was staff reduced? What were, what were the changes?
So I would, you know, I would defer to Public Works, because they were directly over the parks. Um, we, um, recreation handles all the programming, tennis courts, the, um, playground equipment, and the athletic fields as far as what needs equipment-wise, um, so that was the purview. We've always worked with Public Works with whatever needed to be done, but, but as far as cutting and oversight, and park supervisor and park superintendent were, were under Parks and grounds at one point in time.
Okay, so, so that answers the question in terms of where we were ten years ago, quality level of parks. Ten years ago, it was beyond reproach, and I'm, I'm just, you know, this is no disparities on any department, this is just the facts of what it was, and what it is now, and that's my big worry, and that's the, where the complaints that I get. Some of the older folks say, what happened? And, you know, I was with the county for two years, and I answered them, I said, that's a good question, I need to find out what happened exactly, because there has been a shift and a change. So there was a park supervisor in the sense that they were somewhere in Public Works handling that position, more or less, okay, that answers my question there. So who is the park supervisor theoretically now? Because there has to be someone maintaining those now, who is that person now? Or who is the combination of those persons now?
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and, and Commissioner, uh, Commissioners. Right now, I have, um, a superintendent, Carson Newton, and a supervisor, Simon Nance, that supervises all the buildings, you know, uh, the cutting of all the buildings, the city right-of-ways, and, and the parks. And I'm working with, and these gentlemen are working with, um, currently about six people short. That, that's where we are.
Okay, so, so essentially farming this out is economically more valuable than hiring a few more people, which we, we, we need more people. Evidently, you know, I know those salaries with, with Public Works are pretty low, I know it's hard to recruit people there, um, I asked somebody to look at what it would cost for everyone twenty dollars and under, uh, to have a dollar increase, did I ask you for that, Althea? Or who did I ask for that?
Dr. Baker?
I can't...
Yes, sir, that was an HR request, and I provided Mr. Hawthorne with that information.
I'm sorry?
That was an HR request, and I have provided that information to Mr. Hawthorne.
Okay, I haven't seen it, that's, that's what I asked for, but, so if somebody can send it to me, I wanna take a look at that, just, uh, just for perspective.
Cost would be two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, but yes, we've got the, we've got the analysis. Uh, under parks options, and, and one of the things that I told, uh, Michelle and Emmanuel, uh, I want parks oversight, how does services perform, remains to be addressed, uh, it could be a service contract with Public Works, but I think we need a parks supervisor to make sure that, say, that service agreement is met, so nothing is being taken off the table, but I will tell you that this campus that we're sitting on right now, I think it is one of the most attractive campuses that I can think of, period. I mean, this is an actual jewel of the city. This contractual recommendation would be using the firm that's doing that, so, um...
Okay, okay, I got you, and that, this is that new outfit, right, Mercedes, that's just doing, they've been doing a good job, so we're looking at that.
Yes, sir, pro cutters.
And, uh, they were on a trial basis, seeing how they do, and so far, I guess, so good. Well, here's the thing, some kind of way, we were top-notch in our parks with a lot less money, and we've only added Willis Park in terms of an additional substantial addition, so we were able to maintain for a lot less money. How, I, I just, if we could get, I would like to take a look at how we were able to do that, and how we maintained so well then, for less money, and I mean, that's something to really kinda, I think, delve into before we commit to this, because we, come on, you, you've been here for years, am I, am I, am I making this up? We, we were, we were up, and it was some type of collabo with you, you all and, and, and Public Works, and it worked for less money, they were kept very, very, very clean, they were, they were kept very well. So I know things happen in terms of your socioeconomic trends and ebb and flow, and so on and so forth, but I'd like to see how we were doing that and incorporate that into some of these processes, so a lot of maybe folks that have been here can speak on some of what we did and, and, and have a hybrid of it, in a sense. You know, uh, Stanley, uh, you know, Mike Mason is still, he's a resident here, I know he works for the City of Atlanta now, but, you know, it wouldn't hurt to just, you know, hey, here's a little bit of what we did that, that, that worked with Parks and Rec, that, that, that did the trick sometimes, you know, just, it, it, it's good to get a look at some of what we were doing before, and I'm not saying we need to hearken back to the good old days and do everything like we always used to do, don't get me wrong, but when we were looking better for less money, that, that sure sounds, you know, pretty sexy to me, so, so I, I want us to just take a look at that as well. All right, I get off of that. The other thing I had was, uh, I had the same issue with the patrol officers, but I guess next is this, uh, park vehicles, you said one fourteen, you said the vehicle was actually eighty-eight K, is that one vehicle or two?
And so that's two, we're looking at two trucks, and then two of the ATV gators to help get around the parks, that would not necessarily be vehicle vehicles.
So the eighty-eight are two vehicles, and then the rest are ATV, ATM, ATVs?
Correct, two ATVs.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say Sprinter vans are still like forty, you know, forty-five thousand, I was gonna say...
At forty thousand for each truck, and then twenty-four.
And these are, you, you, you want Sprinter vans, like the one you get, the couple that you got?
So we do not want to use any recreation vehicles that we transport people in to be a cross, that we've gone through that before, and putting trash into vehicles that we carry people in is not, has not worked in the past, so we're looking at trucks to put the trash and carry from, from one park to the other.
Okay, so these are, these are for, so these two vehicles would be for tr, for trash? Is that, is that, is that what?
Or, or getting around to the parks, yes, because you're gonna, not every park has, you have to transport the trash from one trashcan to another, so they're gonna have to move the trash, so the trucks were what we were looking at.
Okay, maybe it's just me, but it, it sounds like you all are taking on a lot of Public Works duties, you, you take, you're picking up trash now, and you buying two vehicles at eighty-eight thousand dollars to pick up trash, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
So if we take control of the parks, that would be our purview, would be completely maintaining the parks.
Okay, I, I understand that, but in terms of just basic efficiencies, if you've got a trash system going around robbing twice a week, three times a week...
Mayor?
Why would we set up another system of trash pickup when we have one, and we just make some modifications and adjustments to that to pick up all the trash?
Let me take this one.
Picking up trash, I mean, uh...
Councilman Carron, let me, let me address this in a different way. Going forward, I'm going to strongly encourage the mayor and council, the governing body, that if we beat any of these issues to death, and I know, you know, we're used to getting into, into weeds, and I'm not trying to criticize your questions, but this community has a lot of needs, and we had trouble getting this meeting set up, and we've put together a schedule. I would encourage you, before we get so far down into the weeds and the details, this is conceptual, all of this is conceptual, and when budgets are approved, particularly realigning the organization, we didn't have to go through a transitional process, but I'm just afraid that we're getting down too deep, and we're only on one department so far, so I, I would encourage you to keep this at a high level. All of the details, good questions, and we're gonna work through all of that, that's what professionals do, but I need you to keep it at a higher, please.
All right, understood. Uh, last thing I say is, uh, also with the park patrol, so these will be sworn officers with weapons, police officers.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one of the things I would suggest, as we look at moving forward with that, before we move forward with something along those lines, before we spend that kind of money, it's always good to look at the data, let's take a close, close look at the data, what type of criminal activity are we dealing with in the parks? What does that rank to, oh, I don't know, our convenience stores, or our apartments, or the motels, for instance, uh, to see what kind of security force we're gonna need over there? How much need is it? What do the calls look like? So let's, let's, let's make sure we're looking at everything, you know, giving a, getting a fully realistic assessment before we say, oh, we need two sworn officers in each park, or one officer in every park with guns. Let's make sure we really need that. For, for this.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Allen?
Okay, I'm just gonna try to make mine, mine fairly brief, I've, I've dealt with people adding, uh, folks from one department to another all my life, and it, just be careful, because the way it always ends up is one person, uh, gets the extra people, the other department takes two or three people away from their budget, and then within a matter of a year, year and a half, they're back up again full budget, and, and it might, they might need it, so just, just be mindful of that. The officers, are they gonna be fitted with cameras as well, uh, to record anything that goes on?
As Chief and I spoke, they would be police officers.
Okay. Uh, the, the budget for Phillips Park, and again, I agree, it is one of the busiest parks, uh, that we have, um, wasn't there a budget? Didn't we look at that last year, the budget to re, rework some of the parks each year? Uh, and I don't know if some of that money is already in the budget, I guess is where I'm going.
For updates, is there something specific, Councilman Allen?
For Phillips Park? Because, you know, you were gonna do a park each year, you were gonna do, you know, Barrett Park, and then Phillips, and then, you know, you move around from park...
Correct, so we, um, have, we had funding that went to the basketball court from CDBG, and then again, there's a wish list on here for, or not... And then, again, there's a wish list on here for, or not wish list, a request for a playground improvement, which has been, one of my top goals is to improve all the playgrounds between Phillips and Zapp Park.
Okay. And then again, when you talk about the maintenance of the park, I know now you all are cutting the fields, you will be cutting the whole park now.
That is the recommendation, yes.
So you'll be doing the whole?
With the reorganization through ProCutters.
Okay, I know that there's some equipment that probably would be needed.
Equipment, if there's anything, playground or tennis courts, we, the Recreation Department has always taken care of that. And the tennis courts will be resurfaced as part of this year's budget.
With the equipment that you all are getting, where would that be located? Would you?
So we're not looking at purchasing any equipment currently, right now. Just looking for using the contractor to cut those parks and the athletic fields.
So they'll all be under contract?
Correct.
Okay. I think you've answered a lot of my questions, so that's all.
Councilman Gay?
Well, good evening. First off, let me apologize for coming late. I had a lot going on, and I will also have to leave early. So here's what, here's what some of my concerns would be. So overall, if we keeping this on a high-level conversation, just confirm if I'm right. This budget increase comes to approximately $7.3 million?
Those are departmental requests only, not necessarily the city manager's recommendations, certainly not what the council might approve.
And we have about $20 million in cash?
Yes.
And at the end of this conversation, are we gonna have a conversation about the millet rate, seeing if that'll cover these spendings?
I will be making my recommendations. I will get them to you as early as possible. But I've said no later than this Monday. You're scheduled to take action on the millage on Monday. And my recommendations will factor in what I believe we may need in order to fund my highest recommendations.
So if we could prove all of these, if we consider all of these budget amendments, you're gonna be recommending that the millet rate be lower, remain the same, or increase?
I don't know at this point.
So for me, I can't, I'm like you, I don't want to go through, for me, I don't want to pick through all these line items. I'm just telling you, for me, I recommend that we accept the budget amendments, because I can't figure out what all y'all need for our city. So I'm gonna sit here quietly, but that's gonna be my recommendation with the current millet rate.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the clerk's office. Ms. Ames?
Good afternoon, everyone. So my first budget item is on page 17. And it is a request for a realignment for the legislative office. As you guys know, the executive assistants are now under my purview. And the office does not comfortably fit two people where the current executive assistant sits. I believe that they do share the mayor's office. And we would like to not have her office for use for those type of things in City Hall. We are on top of each other in City Hall. So this budget here is to basically ask for funds to cover that realignment and to also offset the expanded oversight responsibilities. The next page, on page 18, is a similar request for the Strategic Communications Office. We currently have two people in the office. And we are possibly going to host the other position that's already budgeted and approved to have another person join that team. And that office that the current communications manager sits in will be split down the middle to hold two people. And the communications manager will move to the office by herself. And this is also for added funds for a laptop, for the TV station, TVs for City Hall to advertise legal announcements, flyers, communications. Right now, we use the bulletin board to do paper flyers that kind of gets a little crowded in the lobby. So we're asking for funds for that as well. And to offset expenses that we use for Hemsworth Communications to do our press releases. The next page is to, on page 19, is for a City Hall vehicle. Currently, the legislative assistants utilize their personal vehicles for city errands. And if they are in any accidents in their personal vehicles, they would not be covered. Under the city's policy, the vehicle itself, I'm sorry, would not be covered, but they will be. So we would like to get them out of their personal vehicles and into something where they can be covered under the city. And that's all of my ask.
Councilman Clay?
I'm sorry. Elections, early voting location addition. This was already approved by mayor and council, however, but that's all of my ask.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. Councilman Clay?
Yeah, real quick, I had a little trouble hearing you on the display. Are you talking about replacing the LED display out front with video display?
No, inside City Hall, there's two bulletin boards in the lobby.
Okay, got it. That's good. The other thing was, you talk about announcements going out that are, only fall within specific parameters. And anything outside of that is billed as extra to the city. Can you give me an example of some of these releases that are beyond what we're expected?
Anything that is emergency management, those are not covered under the current scope for Hemsworth.
Anything what?
Emergency management, so gunshot, someone shot on Old National, for example. That's not covered under the current scope with Hemsworth. And we get plenty of those.
Interesting. That's. Is a question for Dwight. Is there any way for Dwight, because it has to do with insurance?
Please refer to this as Dr. Baker. Councilman Clay, thank you for the record. As it relates to liability in vehicles, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, can we, could, instead of buying extra vehicles, is there a way that we can change the city's liability policy? So if people are on city business, they would be insured. And then we wouldn't need to have city vehicles.
That would probably cost some additional monies, but I can look into it. But I don't think that would be in the best interest of the city to allow employees to be on the insurance. That's why we have workers' comp insurance for any injuries, but the vehicles are covered. I would not recommend that, that employees be covered personally on our property and casualty liability insurance.
Okay, then back to first question. Are we, do we really think we can do this with one vehicle?
The ask is for one vehicle because I'm trying to be considerate, but I would love to.
I mean, I find it hard to believe that people are gonna queue up for one vehicle. If you say absolutely positively, you cannot drive your personal vehicle. And I came from a company, I'm not disagreeing with Dwight on this. But if you're going to put this in place and you're gonna have a city vehicle, then by gosh, nobody drives in their personal vehicle. I mean, that's a, that becomes a serious offense because it makes the city liable. And it's very clearly liable under those conditions. So if you think you can really get by with $30,000 for one vehicle and that's all you need, that's good. But I'm gonna make a similar comment. If we buy one vehicle, I'll bet you next year we'll be buying another vehicle.
Councilman Carr?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm kind of surprised to hear that Hemsworth doesn't cover the emergency situations. I didn't know that. I thought that was a big part of what we hired him to do. I didn't know that was extra. You know, you all are familiar with our city dynamics. And I think we should have a contract that covers whatever we need covering. When is their contract expiring?
I'm not sure, sir. I have to get that information for you.
All right, if you can find out for me, email that to me and anybody else that wants it. Yeah, the vehicle thing, you know, Fulton County, obviously, we have a large fleet in Fulton County, hundreds of vehicles. When we needed a vehicle, you know, I would always take this electric car that was not a full electric, what did they call it? It's a hybrid, yeah. It's a, I think it's a Chevy, it was a Chevy. It was, but anyway. But a lot of times, I'd take my own vehicle when I had to take care of stuff. I mean, we're a small city. Obviously, this, you know, people do a lot of running around when we, you know, need stuff taken care of, goes without saying. But at any given point in time, there are a lot of cars at rest in the city as well. And it might not be a bad idea to assess that, for instance. I know, like at Public Works, for instance, the young lady that does to keep College Park beautiful, she has a vehicle. You know, now, I don't know how many hours a day she's out and about in her vehicle or whatever have you. But there are dozens of vehicles that sit idle by, you know. Most of us that own vehicles, you know, 90% of the time, we're not in them. You know, just like any other vehicle. I guess the same would apply for vehicles at work. So it might not hurt to look at that in terms of, you know, who's idle and what's idle in terms of a sharing. You know, Hugh Richardson over there at the corner, he's got a nice vehicle over there. I know he's not always in it either, not that he wants someone jumping in and out of his vehicle. And I'd imagine Mrs. Kennedy, I mentioned, with the Keep College Park Beautiful, she has a vehicle. And, you know, but she wants someone jumping in and out of hers. Well, obviously, your personal vehicle, no, but these are all city vehicles. So there are a lot of vehicles now that sit for hours and hours at a time as well. So it might not hurt to just, let's take a look at, you know, how often the vehicles that we have are used. You know, me, I wanna, I wanna, you know, ride them till the wheels come off. You know, we want to get all of our use out of them. So in terms of shared vehicle, maybe there are a couple of vehicles now that can be shared, you know, in a sense, depending on how much downtime they have. So I mean, this is stuff, you know, to look at as well before we, you know, do an expenditure. So with the offices, so my understanding is, like with the, our office where our assistant is, so we're gonna just kind of split that where they'll both have a section. Is that basically it?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, and that'll be same with communications, more or less?
Correct.
All right. Okay, sounds good.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, the only question I have is about the car. If you ordered the car now, it's probably gonna take a while to get here. I don't know if it's gonna be, it's just gonna be, have you looked into that at all, or do you?
I did not look into it. I will say that the folks that do use their personal vehicles as well, they're not reimbursed for the mileage. Because anything that's local, they do not get cash reimbursement for. So that's also their funds that they're using for the mileage on their vehicles.
And I agree with Councilman Clay that once you have one and somebody has it to go to a conference, then somebody else is gonna be looking for it, and you're gonna be adding a couple of cars. But I just think that maybe that's something we could look at at the next budget. Because the time we order it now, it's gonna be spring before we even get it, so that's the only comment I have.
Councilman Gay?
My only question is, in the past years, the clerk's office used to handle the maintenance and upkeep of the building, City Hall building. So my question is, is there anything in the budget for the City Hall building? Or is that found under building and property?
That's going to be under Public Works. Responsibility of City Hall is shifting to Public Works.
To improve the appearance of City Hall in terms of like remodulants? In other words, I think we need to bring City Hall up to the day standards in terms of attracting people to be comfortable in the workplace, furniture that meet ergonomic standards?
Yes, that's more likely to be addressed in the full budgeting cycle. But we at least want to address some of the maintenance, like daily maintenance issues at City Hall. But yes, the goal is to bring the standard up of our maintenance of all of our facilities.
I don't have any other question about the other items.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Flora Bradley with Finance.
Good afternoon. On page 21, you receive the request for a Purchasing and Contracts Manager. I'm not sure, at one point in time, I believe that that was a two-man department. When I started working for the city, it was a one-man department. So we're requesting to add back a position. And I think Stanley does have additional, an additional information he wants to provide. But our request is to add a Purchasing Contracts Manager, which is a supervisory position.
Councilman Clay?
I have no questions on that.
Councilman Carr?
Well, I know since I've been here, it's been a one-person office. I assume the fellow there is the Purchasing and Contracts Manager, isn't he?
No, he's currently a Purchasing Coordinator slash Administrator. He's not the Purchasing Manager. His title is not Purchasing Contracts Manager.
Okay, well, the purchasing department, that person used to be the purchasing director of purchasing. He handled all the purchasing. So you're saying he's doing something else, or is it the same?
He's doing the duties, but his title is not, he's not a director. He falls under finance.
Okay, so somebody just changed the name. Same duties, right? Okay, I'd assume this is exactly what he's in there doing.
Yeah, my understanding is that, and I haven't documented this, but a lot of my assessment is relying on what I've been told, but that it was a two-person office. And actually, at the time that the incumbent was hired, that person came in in the lesser of the two positions that existed. My issues go beyond what is currently being done. Procurement, purchasing is one of the most sensitive areas in government. And we've got to ensure that we are doing it properly. And I'm not suggesting that we're not doing it properly, but we may not be doing it fully. Contracts is one of the issues that caught my attention early on. For many of our contracts, we're on an annual basis, but no one oversees the contracts. And in some cases, we've got some big contracts, such as the recent contract with the FAA. And had it not been for Ed Walls and Althea Flora Bradley to step outside of their normal roles for that major contract. We've had contracts that have lapsed since I've been here. And, you know, we can have discovered them. But the procurement process itself, but an issue that we've got across this organization that we've got to come to terms with is succession planning. Now, I'm not saying that you have to just have two. But we've got $130 million budget. A lot of that is resources dealing with people. But we've had major projects. I have seen examples of when the mayor and council have approved an item, it falls by the wayside. Normally, it's your procurement office makes sure that we're not skipping both before and after until it can then be turned over to project management, them working side by side. But think of different critical service areas. And, you know, whether you want to praise or criticize any employee. In this particular area, if we lost the one incumbent, what happens? It's not going to be a seamless process. And I think Ms. Flora Bradley, who does wonders, I worry about her and all that she's got on her right now. So this will be one of my top recommendations.
And I definitely, I mean, I understand where you're coming from with the checks and balances. Checks and balances, I get that, understood. But purchasing was generally a one-person operation. The reason why I worked with a one-person for some point in time, it was kind of like a dance. It was a chorus. It was, it was, it was a chorus with purchasing, you know, they took in those contracts, they worked with the city attorney on those. It was a, it was a chorus with financing to make sure, it wasn't a standalone operation there in a sense, but it had to work with the various departments to make sure the checks and balances were taken care of. Purchasing person is, you know, is not an attorney. Purchasing agent is not a CPA necessarily. But we, we had the components of those things when we had the, the large purchases and the complicated contracts to come in. I think one of the things that we need to work on also as well, it, it worked, it seemed to work pretty good there for years because staff and department heads, you know, did not operate in silos as much. And, and that's just something in terms of, you know, you got ebb and flow with different departments, and a lot of departments are, uh, you know, they're gonna operate and, and, and some of them will operate with the blinders on, but I, I want us to all start talking more to each other. And I've said that probably dozens and dozens of times. So, uh, I, I get the position request, but I never saw any problems up there before over the years, but, uh, all right.
Councilman Allen?
No, I have no questions on that.
Councilman Gay?
I have a few comments. Um, I moved to College Park in ninety-eight, I've been on council for eight years. At purchasing department, that my understanding was always one person, one computer and a file cabinet to handle a hundred million dollars. That was the past. And the future of fiscal, um, responsibility transparency is moving to today's time. And honestly, what I remember is that we, we hired a, a person that did accounts payables from the Georgia Lottery. Now, that department has taken on a lot of roles. But it's my belief that with the type of budget that we have for transparency, to control costs, to be more fiscal responsible, it's my belief we should have a purchasing and con, two separate departments, a purchasing office and a contract compliance. It's my belief that the city needs to hire a purchasing director. And then it needs to have an office of contract compliance. Those are two essential functions of government. And furthermore, I think we should go a step further and put an ethics officer in that department. I know that's away from what they're asking, but that's just my years of working in local governments and my recommendation to, to y'all.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Dr. Baker in HR and Risk Management.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, the first item is on page twenty-two, is a request for a holiday employee incentive. As you all are aware, in the past, you have, um, granted employees with a holiday incentive. For example, last year, full-time employees received fifteen hundred dollars and part-time employees received seven hundred and fifty dollars. This year, I'm recommending one thousand dollars for full-time employees and for part-time employees, five hundred dollars for an estimated cost of fourteen, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which includes, um, all the applicable taxes. If you flip over to the next page, page twenty-three, there is a request for a basic life insurance increase. Right now, um, our full-time employees only get twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for life insurance. Our department directors get fifty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand dollars for life insurance. This request is to increase the cost of life insurance for all city employees in a full-time capacity of two times their base salary. On page twenty-four is a request for a job analysis classification study. Most recently, we did a compensation study, which allowed a salary adjustment for all city employees. This classification study will address our, our issue as it relates to, um, our pay plans, also addressing the issue of succession planning and ensuring that we have revised, updated job descriptions, and also making sure that our employees are classified correctly as it relates to their FLSA status, full-time versus, I'm sorry, not full-time, but exempt versus non-exempt salary versus hourly, um, uh, salaries. And that include, that includes, uh, concludes my request.
Councilman Clay?
Uh, yeah, I have no questions except to say that the job classification study, I thought we already agreed to do that. So, uh, I, I, I don't understand why it's even in here. I thought we had decided we were going to do that, so I'm good.
Councilman Carn?
Well, I thought we just, just did one, didn't we?
We did a compensation study, which addressed our inequities as it relates to pay.
And this is a classification study, right? So the holiday, uh, not holiday, yeah, holiday bonus, this is in addition to what we already are doing? This four twenty-six?
When you say what we're doing, what do you mean?
The bonus we give employees now, is this in addition to that, the four twenty-six?
No, the budget, you get, last year, you guys gave a, a, uh, holiday incentive. This item was not budgeted for this year, that's why the request is before you.
Okay, so this is the same one we do every single year, is that what you're saying?
It has been customary for, yes, you all to approve a holiday incentive.
But this is an increase. Uh, what I'm asking you, is it, is there a difference? This is the same amount?
It's, it's a different amount. Last year was fifteen hundred for full-time, seven fifty for part-time. This year is recommended one thousand for full-time and five hundred for part-time.
It's less.
It's a less amount than last year.
So you're requesting a reduction in, in, in this modification?
In the, in the incentive, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, all right. Is there a reason why you want it reduced?
Well, I looked at it from the perspective of employees just got a salary adjustment based on the classification study, so that's why the amount was reduced.
Well, a lot of employees did get a decent salary adjustment. I think the issue that I've had, and I, and no one, you know, everyone's aware that I was not pleased with the lowest-paid rest, uh, workers getting very, 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 very little in terms of adjustments at all. So, uh, all things being equal, you know, this reduction wouldn't necessarily be equal.
All due respect, Councilman, the amount that most of the employees that got there on the lower end of the pay scale was anywhere between twenty and twenty-five percent increase, and those were the lowest-paid employees. So they received the largest percentage of salary adjustment.
Well, the lowest-paid salaries, you said the fifteen dollar an hour was went up twenty-eight cents.
That is not correct.
Okay, that's not what you told me. You said it went from fifteen seventy-something to?
That's the minimum salary for an employee. We're talking about our active staff.
I said the lowest paid, that's what I was talking about, the lowest-paid salaries that we pay.
They did, they, they got a, our current workforce in some of our lowest-paid departments, i.e. Public Works, received anywhere between a fifteen to twenty-five percent salary adjustment.
Well, again, that low end and the lowest-paid salaries did not get a fair shakeout of that plan, I don't think. Again, and I'd like to, I don't know if we, this classification study, I guess it won't help fix that. But, uh, I mean, I guess we are where we are with it.
Classification study could potentially address that issue.
Councilman Allen?
Uh, I just wanna say, you know, I don't think we need to get into a, every year, everybody gets exactly the same thing. I think we need to look at it, uh, based on, based on salaries, based on the increases and, and make adjustments accordingly. So, you know, you said last year, where they got fifteen hundred?
Yes, sir.
What did part-time get last year?
Part-time got seven hundred fifty.
Okay, and the year before that, do you know, or?
Um, I'm not sure what the amount was, uh, prior to that year, last year.
Okay, that's all I had.
I think the finance director said five hundred?
Um, it started off at two hundred. When I first arrived and during the pandemic, um, the council increased it, with the largest being fifteen hundred dollars last year.
So it's increased each year on up to fifteen hundred, huh?
Ms. Ms. Lord Bradley, can you highlight the source of that?
In the past years, um, this has never been pretty much budgeted, but, um, it would come from fund balance. But the items, the, um, the increase from the previous years were used, ARPA dollars were used for those. But this year, this would come from fund balance, 'cause we do not, we did not receive ARPA. We only received ARPA, ARPA for two years. So this will come from fund balance.
And for the part-time people or anybody that came on board, if they came on board one week ahead of time, they'll still get the?
Yes, sir, that is the, the request for this year. There's no, um, timeframe associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gay?
My recommendation is that we keep it at the fifteen hundred, and I'll tell you why. I've been approached by news of employees out in the city who've asked me to advocate for the fifteen hundred with knowing that we, in my opinion, we've raised exempt employees up tremendously. And with the prices and inflation and everything going up, I mean, things are really high now. So I think those people are, are really all dependent on that fifteen hundred. And I think if the, if, if you wanna your second sentence says you wanna motivate them towards a higher level of achievement. I think if we don't keep them at fifteen, they're not gonna be motivated, they're gonna be angry.
Noted, thank you, sir.
Moving on to Information Technology, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks, for any items that you prefer not to be discussed in public, we can hold those until then, and we can turn off the cameras, but if there's anything that you want to cover now, feel free.
Thank you, Stanley. Uh, Mayor and Council, so I've got actually four items, one in the budget modification book, and then the other three are on the, uh, docket here. And all of my items, we have to be careful about talking about these in detail in public because all of these falls under the preview of cybersecurity, each one of these items.
Mr. Hicks, I, I, I don't think that we can just turn off the camera and have the conversation. I don't think that's, that's appropriate. And so if we need to have a conversation in executive session about these things at a later date, we have not indicated we were going, going into an executive session at this meeting. And so if, if we need to have the IT conversations in another format, then that's, that's appropriate. But, but turning off the camera and, and having the conversation afterwards is a non-starter.
I agree, Mayor.
Well, Madam, can we talk about these items? And if you want specific information, I can send it to you, but we certainly cannot get into the deep details on these.
If you feel uncomfortable answering any questions that are posed by council, then just say so.
I, I couldn't agree more. I think most of these items should not be discussed in, in public. They just say what we're able to protect against and what we can't protect against. And I don't think that's very appropriate.
So Stanley, I defer to your recommendation, we could talk about these in executive session, maybe the next council meeting in November. Only, the only caveat, that, that would, we're talking about budget amendments, uh, with action by the council at the first meeting in November. So that would afford a time, afford time for an executive session between now and then.
All right, then we will move forward with Engineering. Mr. Pahari?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for getting this opportunity to me. Uh, I'm indeed, uh, very privileged to serve the city of College Park. And, uh,
Maybe a little closer to the microphone thing.
So it, uh, it has indeed been a pleasure and a privilege to serve the city of College Park. And I would like to present these budget requests for your consideration. My first budget item, which is on page twenty-six, is, uh, the request to, uh, for a hundred thousand for construction inspections and engineering contracted services. Currently, we rely on three to four companies for external support in, in professional engineering services, such as land disturbance permits and other certifications. Some of them require specialized certification. Uh, and at this moment, we do not have the staff that can handle them. Therefore, I kindly request you to consider this. And also, um, I, I, I heard that some of these, um, requests also involves contracts. Uh, and we'd like to look into the old contracts and renew them as, um, as well. Uh, some of the items that I would like to move forward with is to prioritize the CIP projects for the following year by getting them shovel-ready so that we can plan out for the following year. Plus also, when we apply for grants, we need a, a specific plan to be able to apply for those grants. So if we have these contractual engineering services, we could start designing them and keep them ready to move forward. My second item is on page twenty-seven. This was for the geographic information systems. Currently, uh, G I S system, uh, we, is, is not meeting the, the, meeting the requirements uh, of the city. Uh, it needs more intervention, and my intention is to make it more automated so that any, anybody in the city, uh, who works within the city as well as for the public to be able to access it and do not have to come to the city and ask for certain documentations, as well as to use the G I S as a analytical tool to be able to make decisions. Along with this would be also to, um, eliminate redundancies. We would like to have this G I S database to back up all the paper files that are hanging around and not in an organized fashion. Plus, uh, would eliminate some of the, uh, associated hardware that we have and to acquire few critical hardware that would help us in digitizing some of the maps and plans that we have in our department. The next budget item is to request an administrative aide on analyst. Uh, currently, I am a one-man army. Uh, I do not have much of, um, support to be, uh, leveraging on. Uh, when I joined the organization, I kind of jumped into the deep end of the pool, and I managed to survive and swim. So I would like to request for an administrative aide on analyst who would be able to help me on invoice, invoice processing, administer some of the special project coordination, responding to customer inquiries. And then we have FOIL requests that we would like to, uh, also some part of, uh, the reporting and tracking some of them. One of the challenges that I've been having is to be, uh, have to be in several places at the same time. And I, it has been a big challenge because I do not have a backup or support service to do that. And the other, uh, function I, uh, request is on page twenty-nine, is to have an engineering technician that, and also to, uh, be able to run AutoCAD and three D applications. Mainly, we wanna get our engineering department into a functional engineering department on, so that we can do some intricate designs on, uh, basic projects to be able to, and also to be able to capture some of the older projects and be able to, um, modify or create new drawings based on that. Also, I would like to use this engineering inspect, uh, technician to provide inspection services and also as a backup planning or succession planning, and also to do some contract administration functions. My next request is on page thirty. This is for, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we are part of the FEMA's National Flood Insurance Pro-Community Rating System. Uh, we have significant amount of complaints coming from residents due to erosion problems with, with the climate, precipitation levels going very high. And also currently, we are at a rated system of six, and this has been since two thousand and two. We would like to move this to a rated, uh, system, community rating system of five, which will reduce their current flooding will reduce their current flood insurances from twenty percent to twenty-five percent. Some of the things that I would like to implement along with this, to have signage, advance, uh, warning signs integrated with the G I S system and address significant erosion mitigations at certain, certainly identified locations, and also to upgrade catch basins and manholes that feeds into the storm drain system. Uh, my next request is on page thirty-one. It is to install speed, uh, uh, speed tables on, uh, in what, four? Uh, and this was a, notably a request from Councilman Gay. And this had been, um, already approved by the city council, but it was not funded. And, um, it was under the impression that the police department was, um, going to move on this, but I, what I understood was the funding was not allocated even for the police department. So I would kindly request you to consider granting thirty-five thousand towards, um, the speed installation, which is already ready to go, but we just couldn't fund it because we do not have a, a, a fund account to do that. My next is, uh, we have, um, since my, uh, I, bef, for, for the, for the longest time, there has been over invoices, um, mounting to about hundred and eighty thousand dollars starting from January for, uh, professional engineering services that was carried out by, uh, organizations such as, uh, prime engineering. So I would like to make sure that these outstanding invoices are paid. They, they intermittently, some of the invoices were paid, but we have invoices totaling to about hundred and sixty thousand dollars currently that needs to be, um, met. My next is, um, item number, it's on page number thirty-three. It's about, um, a payment index traffic analysis throughout the city. The city has not done a comprehensive traffic, um, payment study, uh, which determines the conditions of all our streets, the, to prioritize for, uh, future rehabilitation projects. So this would enable us for the following years to plan for capital improvement projects. And also, um, it would improve our transportation system throughout the city. My next item is to request for the payment rehabilitation around the city hall and our premises, uh, because the city hall is kind of the heart of the city, and I find that it is the payment and the conditions around the city hall are pretty deficient, deficient, uh, not, not, so I would like to request consideration if, uh, it to, to be able to re, repave the entire sections around and, uh, increase the, um, to, to increase the visual appeal of the surroundings and promote functionality and safety. My, my last request is, um, I had several councilmen reach out to me and, uh, request since I have been a one-man army to be able to bring, uh, the, one of the former city engineers to be able to come and work as, serve as an in, a consultant. Therefore, I have requested a ten thousand dollars towards this, uh, request, and I would, uh, kindly, uh, consider that. So there is a lot of historical knowledge that has not been documented, and this, the idea was to bring them in. I know I had a very comprehensive list of requests. I kindly request you to consider this, at least to give thought to the first six items that I mentioned, uh, when you're making this determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buhari. Councilman Clay.
You're an expensive date.
I take it as a compliment.
I didn't say a bad date, did I? Wow, uh, my first one, I guess it applies to a lot of these. The construction engineering contracted services, why wasn't that already in the budget? I don't know whether you can answer that, Dean, but, uh,
Yeah, currently, the construction engineering is only budgeted at forty thousand dollars, and I already have, um, invoices that is totaling to about hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, the sixty-five thousand dollars for the printer, is that the actual cost after elimination of the other printers, or is that just the cost of the printer?
This is to bring, uh, uh, we, this is also along its, its, um, let me clarify, it's actually to hire a consultant G I S service to come and rebuild the thing to facilitate us. So they will not, they will also rebuild the system and also give support service so that we can train our personnel. And also, it will be an interdepartmental issue, uh, because the G I S functions are used by the public works, permitting, fire, police, so that we will be able to integrate and also provide training. So the sixty-five thousand covers, um, equipment and the contract services to bring the G I S company to do the, the development.
But, but you're going presumably, if you put in this centralized printer, you are going to eliminate these other printers.
Correct, right?
All right, so my question is, there's a cost associated with the other printers right now, right?
Correct.
And my cost, and my question is, is this the net after you take away the cost of the other printers? Or is this sixty-five thousand dollars? And oh, by the way, we're going to save twenty thousand dollars on other printers, so this is really forty-five thousand dollars net?
That's correct. The printers that I have in my room are pretty old. They are more than two, they don't even have, some of them don't even have the drivers that work for them. So we need a scanner and a printer for the, for the engineering functions, which is the, 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 the largest scanner and the printer is the, the plotter that we can be, uh, print up to thirty, thirty-six inches in width. That's part of this.
So you're saying it's, it is truly sixty-five thousand dollars of additional cost?
Which include, yes.
There's no offset? That's, that's, that's all I wanted to hear. Um, I'm not done though, yet. Um, what are the, if, if you go to page, I, I think it may be thirty or, I don't know, mine are off by one page here on what I have on the screen, but the engineering technician, AutoCAD, um, what are the intricate designs that you're going to do? Because we, we farm out all these main projects, so you guys aren't going to be doing drawings for these projects. What are you going to be doing drawings for at all?
Yes, um, as an, as a functional engineering, uh, department, we need to be able to, um, design simplistic drawings such as if we have to rehabilitate a small, uh, a payment structure or something very simple, I would be able to do that. Plus, they are, this particular engineering technician will be also supporting me to digitize the, the current, um, uh,
Okay, let me put words in your mouth. Right now, we have some on-call services, and you may need to put in thirty lineal feet of storm sewer. And you're saying you'll go, you'll do the drawing for that. Will that reduce the cost of the service? Because they would have normally done that drawing, would they not?
Yes, so if I can, uh, if, if I had to go to the on-call, uh, service and get it done, I'll, I'll pay thirty thousand dollars for the same service that I can get it done in-house within, uh, within, you know, a much, much larger saving.
Okay, well, then what that says is if we're going to do that, that says when we put out the, the request to the service, the on-call service that we have, we have a couple of them, we make it clear to them, you don't, you don't charge as much because there's no charge for prints on, on your service anymore because we're doing the prints ourselves. Is that correct?
Uh, this is, this does not eliminate completely the on-call service requirement because some of the on-call designs are very specialized and specific, but these are for simple work that could be a, a, a broken sewer pipe, a storm drain, or it could be even, um, like a striping of a payment.
Right, but you'd have a, but you guys won't, are, will you guys do the work and not use the on-call service?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm with you. The national flood insurance, I'm still having confusion about that. Are we? Wha- what are we spending the two hundred and thirty thousand for? I mean, are we, is that for improvements? Physical improvements, like we put in a bigger sewer, uh, oh, a storm drain so that now we can say, hey, we've got a good, we're at, we have adequate storm drains, uh, drainage here, and that should get us a lower rate? Or is it some kind of a study?
Councilman, thank you for that question. There is a, certain places in the city is having erosion issues, and what we are trying to mitigate those erosion problems by, um, fixing them. So there is a little construction work that will be involved. Plus, e- even our catch basins does not conform to a standard. It is, some of them are very unsafe, and it can, it is also, um, it is functionally, it is doing a catch basing task, but somebody could slip and fall, et cetera, and there are signage requirements that has not been implemented. So this is part of, by doing these items, we will be able to, um, one is build up a standard, standardized system, and the community benefit is we will move from a rate six to a rate, uh, to a rating five system, which will give insurance savings and also put the city at a better advantage, um, to market the city as a, a more progressive area, place.
Let me ask a slightly different question. If we spend this two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, are you going to have to spend any additional money to get the change in level? In other words, this is a complete thing, and, and I know you can't be sure, but you're not anticipating, oh, well, this is just a study, and then we've got to do five hundred thousand dollars worth of storm sewer work in order to get things changed. So it's really to make that change from level six to level five, you're going to have to spend, uh, seven hundred and thirty thousand instead of two hundred and thirty thousand. Is this the whole package, or is this, or is this just the paperwork, if you will, and the planning? And it's still going to take a bunch of more money in order to achieve that?
Councilman, when I made this number of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I was looking at identified locations that have significant erosion problems and complaints, and also the catch basins that are undersized and uh, does not conform to a proper best management practice in the industry. So my intention is to, within the, the allocated budget that I have requested, to be able to do that, so we can use that as a, um, as, um, city's contribution towards getting to that rating system. So I'm, I'm not sure, I don't say this is the, this is going to be the final amount, but at this point, we have identified specific places that need immediate action to prevent flooding.
So this will actually pay for some construction work?
Correct.
The speed table, I thought we, and, and I guess you said, we already had approved this in the budget. In fact, I kept wondering, I, I asked Councilman Gayn a couple of times, I think in council meeting, uh, had this been done? And, and it hadn't been done, so I'm, I'm good with that. The, the prime engineering outstanding invoices, why weren't at least these in the budget? I mean, if these date back to January of twenty twenty-three, not only should they have been in this budget, but they should have been in the old budget.
I, I don't know if I have the answers to that, but I believe, um, maybe our finance director could, I advise us, that I believe that the engineer's salary was also kind of allocated towards that because there was no engineer. So it could be, um, factored into the, the salaries and the benefits of the city engineer there. So maybe I could ask for some clarifications on that. It could be a possibility.
Yeah, you know, no need to answer it now, but the bottom line is it wasn't in the budget. Okay.
That's correct.
I believe Ms. Florida Bradley has some clarification on that.
No, I was asking what wasn't in the budget? The
The
Professional services contract?
Outstanding invoices for prime engineering.
Okay, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I'm, I'm not clear yet as to that entire amount does not account, it's not accounted for for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Some of it is associated with fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so it's not technically a hundred and sixty thousand, correct?
Well, it is coming to closer to a hundred and forty-five-ish, I would say.
Okay.
Because only forty thousand is allocated, but there are some invoices that has not even completely been.
Yeah, um, we'll discuss as far as like what fiscal year falls in, but he is correct because, um, recall, because, um, there was a budget for the city engineer. However, we did not know when they would be onboarded, so we reduced the professional services contract, and we said that we would use them less once the city engineer was hired because there are currently four positions budgeted in that department.
Okay, um, on, on the parking lot, um, have we had a problem with stormwater flooding in the parking lot? I can see resurfacing it, making the argument for resurfacing it so it looks nicer, but, um, it sounds like some other significant engineering and, and the justification is that we, we were concerned about flooding. I didn't know we had flooding in the parking lot.
We do not have flooding, but we just have runoff issues that we would like to mitigate, which is, uh, draining to Main Street, uh, that we'd like to mitigate, but along with that, we'd like to make sure the surrounding areas are also paved because there is a lot of cuts and openings that has been done. So it just doesn't look even and nicer. It's more, uh, there is a functional aspect to it as well as there is a, a visual appeal by doing that.
Okay, we, we did have flooding on Main Street several years ago, and we did do some things to the sewer there, and you're saying you want to clean it up more?
That's correct.
I'm with you. Okay. That's all I have.
Councilman Khan?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but, uh, you know, I can understand expensive dates. Couple of weeks back, my wife, we were driving and she said, uh, she's asked, she said, take me somewhere expensive. So I immediately drove to a gas station and we got a full tank. So, you know, I can understand that expensive date thing, but, uh,
Was she satisfied with that?
No, not really. Not really. But, uh, my one question is, so the state certification for land disturbance, is that something that any engineer can acquire, or is it class, is it schooling, the classes?
I'm currently pursuing the class.
I can't, I can't hear you at all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm currently pursuing that class. Uh, in fact, today I had to, uh, cut that class short and come here for this meeting.
Oh, so you've been cutting class, huh? All right, okay, uh, the G I S, uh, I know the, uh, SRE certification, there are a lot of folks that can, you, we can get that as well. It was intriguing, you, you, you touched on having that available for the public to play with. Uh, it's quite a program, and it's really something. I never took the SRE levels, but there's a I never took the ESRI levels, but there are different levels, but I took a look at it for a day or two, and it's really something else. If you've got accurate data inputs in, I guess that's your big, the big thing that you look at. But we have ESRI, right? We have the, we have the system, right?
We have currently a system, yes. But it is, it needs to be updated to be able to use a friendly because the current, the current can be only used by somebody who really knows ESRI very well. But this system was developed to be used by anybody, anyone that needs to be done. So that's why what I'm trying to set, set it up in such a manner that anybody can use it, plus use the backup data to, it has to be like a one-stop place that anybody can stop and look at the maps, the plans, and the data that is associated with that infrastructure.
I remember at one point, I talked around the idea of inspections, a former person getting their ESRI certification so they can handle that because a lot of times you just, you have a fellow up there in the map room waiting on somebody to get a map done, and, you know. So there's that. The $180,000 that was due, so I still didn't understand, is it due, is it, because it says?
We, we need to scrub that number.
Okay.
The finance director is already looking at it. We do have the issue of the two fiscal years. So if there was a cost that was incurred before June 30th, that will need to be charged back to the previous fiscal year. The finance director will guide us in how that needs to be done. So this number will be scrubbed by the time I make a recommendation.
Okay, so it's not necessarily outstanding invoices. People calling us, give us our money. We don't, that's not happening, right?
That is, that is happening.
It is happening. Okay, well, that's not good. We want to make sure we pay our bills. I know we got tight, but I don't want College Park to look like, you know, the folks that don't pay their bills.
Yeah, but the main reason that it's been held up is Ms. Bahari has really been at a disadvantage. He hasn't had any legacy of staff since he started. So having to go back and sign off on, I mean, he's had to figure it out, basically.
Okay, well, we got, you know, and it's not all, you know, I always say it's, 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 it's a dance of departments, you know. Some of that, you know, you got billings, you know, some of that goes through procurement, some is, you know, I guess accounts receivable, just like, like normally, right? I guess every, you know. So, so we got to, I guess, do we work on the handoffs? Kind of like, you know, like a relay or get it together or figure it out or whatever have you? But I, I don't want us to, you know.
Sometimes I take the baton and run, but finally I realized that it was not funded, so it comes from my budget.
Oh, boy.
Dr. Emanuel and myself have got into and will get into fights because of that because I get, get things done. But then finally, when I asked Dr. Emanuel to pay for it, he says he doesn't have the money, so it comes from my budget.
I can understand that. It's a real big problem. The $230,000 for the, so that's a city, kind of a citywide assessment. Would, Althea, you think the most, some of the most funds might qualify for some of that type of stuff? Possibly?
I would have to look at the details of the, the scope of the works, the services that need to be conducted in order to determine that, but I'm not sure because it's primarily for water and sewer.
Right.
Type of projects, so.
Well, this sounds like a water flooding, you know, water and sewer project flooding, but it might, might be a good idea to just take a look at it and see if we can, you know, thread the needle. See, the last thing I had, they answered the question about the catch basin, so that answers that. So that's all I had.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, a couple of questions. You've talked about engineering technicians. Any chance that possibly we could be looking at an intern? Because these interns are very, very sharp and know an awful lot that's going on with the schools around.
I'm very much inclined into an intern because I can train them as well as they, they, it will, I am into it, interns, yes.
Okay.
And the mayor introduced us to a program with the, with the GMA just this afternoon. So Breck and I have already had some conversation, and we're going to be bringing that to the full CBLT.
Okay. You said here, you're seeking to fill a position of administrative aid. Have we already approved that position, or are you seeking a new hire? Is that a position that's already there that we froze or? Well, I'm, it just says here, engineering department is seeking to fill the position of administrative.
It would be a new position.
It's already there or?
Yes, when you decided to bring back the city engineer, it was like revitalizing this department. Now, I know the finance director mentioned four positions, but right now there's only one active incumbent. You've got a special projects administrator, you've got a GIS coordinator. But it's not ringing a bell with me, Althea, what the fourth position is.
Erosion control specialist.
Erosion control specialist. I'm not familiar with that one, but there's an erosion control. A part, a part of my scrubbing will make sure that I'm fighting in all of those positions and let one of those could fund this request.
Okay. And then again, same thing about the invoices. We need to make sure that, that we're, if those are behind, we need to make sure we take care of those. That's all I have.
Councilman Gaines?
Before I ask my questions, I want to thank Ms. Miller for a delicious lunch and a great presentation.
I echo that.
I have a couple of questions. The flood insurance, right? But this is insurance, a different type of coverage?
Well, actually, it is a FEMA program. The benefits of the program is the reduction in insurance, flood insurance coverage for those who purchase flood insurance because there are about 40 properties that is built on flood plain. But also it will help others who would want to purchase flood insurance. That's, that reduction is, we currently get 20% of it, but for that, to maintain that level also, we have to do quite a bit of infrastructure. But my intention is to bring it to a level five from a level six currently.
So, and I'm going to be brief with this. One of the challenges I have on council is particularly Ward Four, we have a lot of lakes, not lakes, but creeks that connect. And I'm always challenged with trying to balance homeowners claiming that their basements have flooded and it's came from city stormwater. And I know I will often get with, it's actually sanitation where they maintain a flood map in the engineering's office, that's what I was told. So I guess my question is, for this fee under this program, will it include identifying what's city and what's private as it relates to metagame flood?
That is beyond the scope of this, this project, this request because we have identified some places that needs, need some assessment. But probably it's, it's a consideration that we can put forward with. But we do have the flood maps developed by FEMA, and we have also the, currently we're also working on some definitions and code up, code a language preventing people from building on flood plain. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question directly, but this particular request does not factor in a whole identification. But it would, depending on how much fund was availability, because there is one location, although I put $260,000 just for that one location only, my estimate is about $160,000. So I can do probably two locations with this money.
A comment, it's not so much a question. I was looking at the office upstairs where you work. I've often thought that we need to redo it, change it because I look at some engineer spaces in the public sector, and, I mean, they're far advanced than your office, and I think that has a lot to do with production and maintaining staff, lighting. It's a lot in terms of retooling that office, in my opinion.
Well, yes, it's, for me right now, more than a cosmetic thing, I need to get the functionality of my department running. But of course, that has been my consideration. But when I found the, if you had seen how I found my, my office space and office, it's much, much more better than what I originally founded. And I believe the city manager may agree with it as well.
All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to police. Chief Rogers?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The first item, you can refer to page 36. As you know, up until municipal court has always operated under the police department. The charter, the current charter is being amended to make the municipal court its own standalone entity. With that being said, certain line items need to be addressed. One thing is a technology fund so the judge and her staff could have money for operating from the standpoint of technology. And also, they will also need contractual services we talked about, but I don't see that there. It would be $10,000 apiece. One for a court technology fund, and then additional $10,000 for contractual service so the judge and her staff will be able to function on its own. My next, next ask is X on storage. With the increase in enforcement, which is a great thing, it also has increased open record requests from different entities that utilize the X for our body camera and things of that nature. So the storage for this, those capacity has increased. The X is only $3,000 for this. And last, but certainly not least, it's the portable surveillance camera. This would be a camera that would be utilized. It has a trailer that can be utilized throughout the city for any of our hotspots areas that could capture, capture data and help deter crime, but also assist in solving any crimes that may happen in those particular locations. Compared to others' department, I'm only asking for pennies.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Clay?
Yeah, it's chief. I, I have virtually no problems with your items. Just a question on the last one, the surveillance camera. The $60,000, does that pay for the whole thing? In other words, if it's, if it's like a telescoping camera, for example, that you have, you see up in some of the parking lots? Is that what we're talking about?
That is correct. It's also known as a lock camera, but we want to give it a more sophistication, sophisticated name in a portable surveillance camera.
Okay, so, so this includes the whole push? In other words, you've got the communication link, which I assume is by cellular, and you've got the telescoping camera and the power supply, and this is the whole package? There's nothing else coming?
There's nothing else. And also, one thing with this, my ask is to purchase the camera, and this camera will be bought into our upcoming new technology that we will be setting out, which is FUSIS. This camera footage will come right into that system as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilman Carron? Councilman Allen?
I just had a couple of questions in here. Do we have any of these mobile cameras now?
No, sir, this would be the first.
Okay, and we had, with your compliment, you said you're down, what, 18 now or something like?
16.
16? With the money that, you know, was allocated for those, that, those personnel, can that money be used to?
We were hoping to leave those, and me and Althea have talked of using hotel motel taxes to supplement for the camera.
Okay, that's the only thing I had.
Councilman Gay?
This was in the last report, but it mentions you. Are there any other speed tables? Didn't other council members want speed tables that we talked about adding? Do we have to do another adjustment for those other wards to get additional speed tables?
That would be under engineering. I haven't been approached with any speed, any new speed tables for the city.
Actually, I've mentioned one before. I can't remember when it was, but it's pending on what Martha's going to do. Now, we're working on getting them back along the frontage road there, parallel to Camp Creek at the apartments where they used to be because that stop is a little too dangerous out there on Camp Creek. You know, once we fix the bridge and the infrastructure and the sinkholes, hopefully they're fine, we're going to try to get them back over there. Pending if we can, there can't be speed bumps where they come in and out. But if they're going to go out to the park or not and come back around, we got to just design their route where they can't, they can't have, we don't want the speed bumps there, but it can be a little bit of a slalom there as people are speeding along that, that longer strip from the park to the bridge. So that's something I may want to look at at some point.
Would this be a future project for the police? Or would this be a future project for engineering for clarification?
Oh, whoever, I mean, you all don't install them, so engineering, public works, whoever installs them, right?
It will be addressed in the community investment plan, so that's in our next budgeting cycle.
Councilman Gay, any other questions?
No more questions.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Chief Elmore and fire rescue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two items this, today, and the first one is on page 39. The second one will be on page 40. As you know, 75 to 80% of the calls that we respond to are emergency medical calls. At this time, I'm seeking to initiate a pay incentive for our EMTs, the emergency medical technicians, and increase the incentive for paramedics. The amount that we're requesting for the EMTs are $3,000 for EMT annually, and we are moving the firefighter, paramedics incentive from $3,500 annually to $5,000 annually. Currently, we have 47 EMT positions, firefighter EMT positions. That would be at a cost of $141,000. And secondly, we have 24 paramedic positions within the fire department, and at $5,000 annually, that would come to $120,000 annually, including the fringe benefits, pensions, and FICA. That amount of both will come to $327,529. Our second item. I sent an email to all of you all a few months ago, in July, July 19, 2023. Fire stations experienced a drive-by shooting where three bullets entered our station. And one month later, August 25th, we had another drive-by shooting over at fire station number one, at the Public Safety Building, where there's three to four bullets that entered the station. So I'm requesting to replace all the windows that's facing the streets at the Public Safety Building, Fire Station number one on College Street, Fire Station number two on Sullivan Road, and Fire Station number three on West Fayetteville. So we're asking to replace all of the windows with ballistic windows. We've only received one replacement cost at this time, and And. A total cost, uh, come to two hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, thirty-eight cents.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Clay?
Yeah, uh, the emergency medical incentive. Does this make us, uh, competitive or superior to other cities?
Sorry, we still have a long ways to go. Um, I see where Roswell just, uh, increased, gave their public safety, uh, thirty-five percent increase. So they're starting to pay right now sixty-three thousand dollars, whereas ours is fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay. I thought the, the ballistic glass was already approved.
We never did bring it before you all.
Okay, so, all right, um, the only question I had was, when they shoot at the glass, I can't believe they're that good a shots all the time. So what happens to the door? The glass is in the door, is it not?
Yes, we have glass in the door and we're talking about the windows.
Well, I, but, but, but you're talking about the, the, uh, automatic doors that are raised to let the fire trucks in and out, right?
Yes, we, as a matter of fact, um, at both stations, they did shoot through the truck bay doors. And, um, bullet went through and went to the back wall.
So it, the bullets are going through the doors too?
They are, yes.
So aren't you concerned about that?
We are. Um, as a matter of fact, we did get a price quote on the doors, and it's over a hundred thousand dollars per door. To replace the, uh, the ballistic, uh, glass in the doors.
So are you, are you talking about doing the doors and the windows, or?
Right now, because the, the doors are out, it's not in the sleeping quarters.
You're not talking about the, the bay doors?
Right, we're not talking about that right now. We'll bring that back later.
Wow. Well, I mean, I'd be worried about bullets going through the door. There, there is ballistic material that's about a half inch thick that you can overlay that would. It's not going to keep the door from any damage, but it will keep the bullet from going through. It's a shame we have to think about that, but I don't know whether it'll add enough weight to the doors to make that a problem or how, how you would fit that, but that's something you might wanna consider. That, that's all I had. I'm good.
We'll take a look at that.
Councilman Carron?
I didn't have anything.
Councilman Allen?
Uh, the only thing I have is on the, uh, the emergency medical. Will that help on recruiting when, when you recruit? Uh, are, how many people are you down? Are you down several, or?
Currently, we're down to three positions. We have three vacancies. And that's an improvement over the last couple of years. As far as it will help with recruiting, there are other departments out there that's paying a little bit more. Um, like I said, I know Sandy Springs, as a matter of fact, where they, once you get your EMT certification with Sandy Springs, I think they're paying them five thousand dollars a year. And if you're paramedic, they're paying them ten thousand dollars a year. And you have a lot of, um, private ambulance companies out here that's, uh, paying, uh, sign-on bonuses. Um, you have the movie theaters, other, um, that they are paying a whole lot, so a lot of firefighters are leaving to go work for the movie theaters.
Would that help on retaining these people then?
It, it should help on retain, um, ours, yes.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to Public Works. Dr. Adadiran?
Good afternoon, Mayor Councilors and, uh, colleagues. For the past, I would say, thirty years or more that, um, I've been involved with Public Works. Um, there's a federal program that is, um, smart net zero. And what I'm trying to stress, um, is. Since I've been, uh, in public, public work organization. I knock on wood that I've not had any death, talk of, uh, kids' death. And I don't want any death to happen, to happen on the man watch here or anywhere else that, you know, I go and work at. The past thirty years in five localities, you know, there's, there has ne- never been anything like that. And I pray to God that nothing like that happens. And that brings us to the first, uh, request for Lake Shore. When you. Were on Hershey Road, just before you turned to Lake Shore, if you look to your left, you see three little doors. That's where, uh, three kids, you know, were, were ki- were killed. This was some years back, you know, but I saw those doors and I asked my staff. And that's what I, you know, what they told me. And at the beginning of this, um, school year. I went on Lake Shore, uh, Chief, I thanked, um, Chief, Kenny Rogers, that, um, three of the officers. Uh, right there at the beginning of the school year, one was at the intersection, one was towards the middle of the private school. And then one was there directing traffic. I mean, traffic was backed up, just almost close to Lake Shore. That, um, the oncoming traffic have to, in order not to hit the vehicles in front of them, they have to literally move to the middle of the road or oncoming traffic. And if you go on Lake Shore today, uh, with the new paving, what I did was, uh, I moved the, um, median marking from where it used to be, I moved it further to the left. So we can create this, um, bike lane that when the parents are taking their kids to school in the morning, um, this lane will be open for them. And then in the evening, you know, when they're going to pick up their kids, it will be the same thing. It's just an accident waiting to happen and as I stated, you know, and I'm making it public, it won't be on the man watch that anybody, uh, would be killed or a serious accident will happen. So, um, asking for this, uh, fifteen, six around fourteen dollars. The yellow, the yellow marking is already there. I just need this, um, markings to go there. So people going to take their kids to school and pick them up, you know, it can be, it will be there. And it won't be a driving lane. It will just be a lane where, uh, parents can, um, take their kids and, and pick them up from school. That's what this post, um, request is for.
And let us know the page number for the next one.
Page forty-two is, um, uh, with the new, um, assignment, you know, being given for the city facilities. I'm only one person and I can only be there in one, um, one building. Uh, yesterday, I was at the federal building right off, uh, I was at our pump house. So while there at the pump house, I went to the federal building. And apart from that federal building and this building here, there are thirteen other city buildings that needs to be maintained. And what this, um, facility maintenance technician will do, I will, you know, work with the individual that, that'll be the boots on the ground. With the help of, uh, Mike here, we have, um. Yeah, we have a new counter right, maintenance counter right system, you know, that's coming on board. And I'll be contacting, you know, um, people in the different building that, um, uh, will be listed on the system that if there's any issue, they can go on the computer, uh, list it for us and it's something that we can, um, between the facility maintenance technician and myself, it's something that we can track. If it's some, if it's a job that can be done in-house, yes, we will do it. And if it's something that we need to contract out, you know, we will, you know, do that. To this a way to kind of, um, bring our buildings to, to two thousand, uh, twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four state of, uh, you know, maintenance. Right now, there's no maintenance program, no way. I mean, absolutely, it is zero. The only places that you have it is the federal building and, um, our command Mercedes, you know, even though we work hand in hand, our commander, from time to time, I have air staff, you know, coming and helping us out. Um, the third one is, um, uh, landscape specialist. Um, everywhere in the, you know, different parts of the way I've worked, we've had, uh, gardeners that know about horticulture, uh, gateways, you know, um, are not what it needs to be. So we need a gardener that can, you know, help along, uh, with the grass cutting crew. The second to the last is, um, as I stated, you know, the, the sidewalk. If you go on frontage, uh, in the morning and in the evening when, uh, school bus left, you know, let the kids out of the, uh, school buses, you see the kids everywhere crossing the road. And as Councilman Gay stated, um, sometime people be speeding. And, and I pray that nobody's child get hit. And that's what this sidewalk, even though we started some of it in-house, but we need the money, you know, to complete this sidewalk from, um, where we are now all the way to the park. And the last, but not the least, is, um, is also a sidewalk, uh, around, um, Jones Circle. You know, we need the repav- repaving and also putting a sidewalk there, so.
Thank you, Dr. Adadiran.
You all help us out.
Councilman Clay?
Yeah, I, I, I may not have heard everything, uh, so I apologize. But. I don't quite understand how taking a lane away for a bike lane or taking a portion of a lane for bike wa- lane, for a bike lane helps mitigate the travel, uh, the traffic. I would think it would increase the backup of traffic. Or do you mean it mitigates the traffic by restricting it so that there is only one lane? You're making the road smaller. It's less wide. So how does that improve traffic flow?
Uh, Councilman, um, with, um, federal Department of Highway, Georgia Department of Highway, and even the, um, county, uh, regulations, each lane is minimum twelve feet. And we have sixty-something feet, um, wide in this, um, particularly Lake Shore. Initially, the shoulder on the left and the shoulder on the right, you know, were there, uh, there's no sidewalk. You know, and what we did was, uh, give each side thirteen feet, which is beyond the minimum requirement for the federal, the state and the local government. And we shift, we shifted the markings in the middle, middle of the lane and also the crown, so the water can drain properly. We shifted thirteen feet to the left and thirteen feet on the right and the shoulder to the right. It's where we put this marking so the vehicles going to the school, you know, can, can be in this, um, particular. It would be, it won't be a broken bike lane, like, it will be a solid white, you know, white line.
Okay, I, I've talked to you separately.
Okay, no problem.
I don't understand.
Okay, okay.
Councilman, can I just add to you?
Yeah, that, that's, okay, we'll, we'll talk about it outside of here. The landscape specialists, are, are the vacant positions currently in the budget that you talk about here?
No, sir. It, that's, you know, it's not a vacant, it's a position I'm requesting for.
So they aren't already, the ba- okay. And, um, Jones Circle.
Yes, sir.
Are we talking a sidewalk on just one side of the street or both sides of the street?
Uh, one side of the street. One, uh, one side, um, is, is, East Point has a sidewalk on the, on the other side, starting once you pass Fairway, Fairway Drive, you know, no. No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a diff- I'm sorry.
There's no east point there?
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, it's a different sidewalk, um, I was thinking about. No, Jones Circle, no, it's just one side of it.
Okay, so, I, Jones Circle is a horseshoe.
Yes, sir.
And I can certainly understand why you'd wanna put a sidewalk on one side of the street there if people are using it as a turnaround, which I suspect they are.
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I, not my word, but I've been on Jones Circle a couple of times. So, um. So this is just on one side of the street and. That is, okay, so I was hoping it was on both sides of the street and we could cut it back to one side of the street and reduce the cost, but it's always on one side.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Carron?
All right, uh, yeah, I was looking at the, uh, the, uh, Lake Shore piece. And Roger, I know that's your area, so I know, I guess you know what you need there.
He stepped out.
Yeah, oh, is he gone? All right, uh, yeah, so, uh. Yeah, I looked at, looked at the indent, indentations and I saw that there was a shift. But look, looking at it, I mean, theoretically speaking, you, you could have three lanes of traffic down Lake Shore, technically speaking, right?
Technically, but we cannot do that because we have to go before normally the council, but Georgia Department of Transportation. And there are more, um, more things that would need to be done in order to have the third lane.
Okay, understood. So a three-lane isn't, isn't what you're going for. I understand the bike lane, that, that makes good sense, but. I mean, obviously, if you can accommodate a bike lane, I mean, you could accom- com- you, you could accommodate two bike lanes, technically speaking. But would a sidewalk make more sense e- e- o- o- on the interior? Would that be more value to the residents than a bike lane, per se?
Um, if, if we do a sidewalk there, it will cost us a whole lot more because we will have to acquire property. And then, uh, we, we, I mean, people say, well, you can use eminent domain, eminent domain. It doesn't work all the time.
Well, well, you're not gonna do that in that neighborhood. But, um, you know, theoretically speaking, if you have enough width within the street.
Yes, sir.
The sidewalk could go, going in, not encroaching off of anyone's yard. You, you would have enough to do your sidewalk and a bike lane within the sixty feet that you have to work with.
Uh, it, it will, it, it will sidewalk and, and what we proposing on doing here, it will not walk on that street, sir. No.
Okay.
Okay, because a minimum for any vehicle, you want at least eight feet, eight feet, you know. And then when you thi- put the sidewalk in there, you're just asking for trouble. This way, it, it won't be a broken line, it'll be a solid white line that the parents can, you know, um, you know, move in that particular lane to go to school, to go to the school and also, um, drop their kids and pick their kids up.
So, so technically, you, you would have a, 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 an extra lane, so to speak?
In, in a way, yeah, that would be, it would be a solid white line.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, uh. The facilities maintenance, that was something that we talked about in the budget a couple of years ago. And for some reason, it wasn't, no one was interested. Well, I was very interested. Uh, in, in a facility, a building to handle maintenance, we could literally save hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. This stuff gets so ridiculously expensive for the smallest fixes. You know, uh, uh, if you look at the prices of anything, electrical or simple plumbing stuff, I mean, it's, it's, it's beyond belief. And this is, this is simple stuff. I mean, some of it I do, you know, but, but i- it's like, i- it's amazing, you know. So, 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 yeah, this is a, uh, this is a, this is a one that pays for itself in spades, I would say. If we get someone that.
Thank you.
Knows how to do things. Uh, landscape specialist. knows how to do things. Uh, landscape specialist, I I I would, I would love to see, obviously, we need that. You know, we we're, we always say we're a showcase city, a hospitality city, so our landscaping needs to be above reproach.
Yes, sir.
And we have near to none in terms of not a concern with us at all, and that which is, which is not, not a good thing. Uh, I always thought it would be a good idea to figure out how we can incorporate that into a, into a position that we have now with a bump. So if we have an open position per se for such and such or whatever have you, finding somebody that has some, a green thumb and some skills in that as well as whatever the position is. So I, you know, I'd love to see a a a hybrid, some kind of a way of maybe, you know, couching that into an open position now.
Yes.
You know, with a with a little adjustment as opposed to, so, yeah, I I mean, this is, yeah. So that that's all I had on 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 what you got, yeah.
Councilman Allen.
First of all, when I ride my bike on Lake Shore all the time and never had any problems, but I guess I haven't been by there when all the traffic's there. But a bike lane usually goes from down one street and will turn on another or turn on a road, and and it continues. This is just going to be a bike lane on one, one road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, on the, you know.
You're you're making a bike lane but going to use it like a sidewalk.
And I I won't say sidewalk. It would be more of a a a lane where parents in the morning can take their kids to school, and then the afternoon, you know, it it would take away from people driving onto oncoming traffic. Because where the yellow line used to be, the medium used to be, we had to shift it about three feet, you know, to the other side. That way, no vehicle would be traveling and trying to go on the yellow and the yellow lane. You know, I mean, they cross the yellow lane and facing the oncoming traffic.
I understand, but I just, cars are not going to pay any attention to the bike lane. I think they're just going to move right into the bike lane. So uh, the landscape specialist, uh, could you take a couple of positions you have since you're losing some to uh Parks and Recreation and use some of those into a specialist or?
Um, I mean, I'm hurting now with um the staff. I can fill all the positions that I have. And then taking one of them, ev- all the positions I have in buildings and grants, sir, I need all of you fill to make the city look like where it needs to be. You know, when you come from South 14 and you cross into uh College Park, I want anybody to be able to differentiate that I'm leaving South 14 entering to College Park. And when you leave College Park and go into East Point, okay, I don't want somebody or the sign saying entering to, you know, just mere looking at the appearance, you know, the way the city looks. And even when you go on um Sullivan, you know, um Ga- Gadsby, all those areas, you know, we want to expose it up and make our city look different from the surrounding.
I think we're all in agreement there because, you know, we are a tourist town and we have a lot of tourists coming and going from every direction and and uh people coming into the schools and people going to the airport. They need to to see that, hey, College Park is is a beautiful place to be. So, yeah, we all agree with that. So uh, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Addie Dieron. We'll move on to Sustainable Development with Mr. Camber and Ms. Hall Garrison.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the needs assessment for the Sustainable Development Department. Um, I'd like to start off just by also mentioning that Tasha and I are here on behalf of the Sustainable Development Director, Michelle Alexander, who is currently on leave. Um, but we did prepare this uh in partnership with Michelle before she uh entered leave. Because our department is being restructured, I just want to spend a real brief moment just explaining the new divisions that are a part of the Sustainable Development Department. Um, so first is Economic Development. Again, this department used to be called Economic Development. Now Economic Development is a division between, within Sustainable Development. And Economic Development, its mission is to attract and retain and support the expansion of employers in College Park, uh, ensuring high-quality and well-paying jobs as well as increasing the tax base and supporting the growth and development of small businesses. The Sustainable Development Department also manages and staffs the city's Development Authority, BIDA. And BIDA's, one of their chief goals is to ensure quality development uh throughout the city to ensure um a strong economy and a high quality of life for the residents of College Park. One of the new divisions that um we're going to be talking about is Planning and Zoning. Um, is now part of uh Sustainable Development. So overall, planning and zoning works to plan smart land use and zoning within the city. Um, one of the core functions of any planning or zoning department is implementing the city's zoning ordinance, of course. And one of the new functions that we um are going to talk about a little bit more too is um an expanded planning role for the city and providing these services in-house. So that's strategic planning, long-range planning, use analysis, small-area planning, transportation planning. These are all functional areas that we're looking to um add capacity uh within uh the city's Planning and Zoning Division. Uh, and this is really important in terms of just guiding the growth and development uh within the city for many years to come. Um, and then Planning and Zoning also manages and staffs the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So that would also be a function uh all area underneath Sustainable Development as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Tasha to talk about the three final divisions, which is Housing, Community Development, and Main Street.
Thank you, Ben, and hello, Mayor and Council. So three additional divisions that are listed under Sustainable Development. Um, one first being Main Street, which is our historic area where we focus um our attention on the um small business assistance and really just expanding um in supporting that historic district. Another that is a new division that is listed under Sustainable Development is Housing. And as you know, housing is not only a local issue but a national issue, which we intend to address through assisting homeownership as well as renters with renter landlord education. And lastly is Community Development. Community Development is something that we have been doing, but we want to really divide and specify. So to define, to define Community Development, it is to empower community members grounded in principles of inclusion, social justice, and having collective action towards sustainable development. In short, that means that we want to focus on the quality of life of our residents, business owners, and property owners, as well as supporting our workforce and educational opportunities. I will turn it back to Ben to begin our presentation.
Thank you, Tasha. Um, so we're going to start on page fifty-five of your booklets um with our number-one priority, which is the Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a new position for the city that we're proposing. This is a person who, again, has in-house uh planning. It's an in-house planning and zoning manager. It has a number of skills. So this person would have strategic planning, long-range planning, use analysis, small-area planning, project management, and transportation planning skills. Um, they would also lead our consultants on LCI's livable center initiatives and other small-area planning along with the review, implementation, monitoring, reporting, and updating of the comp plan, the comprehensive plan. Um, also, this person would manage uh the two planning-related boards, so the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Not only would they manage and staff it, but they would also provide these boards with training. And uh this position would also supervise the existing planner that the city um uses as contractual services currently. Um, so this is a real, we put this as our number-one top priority because we think this is a critical um area that the city needs to bring um in-house services to and really invest in. Um, many other cities um have these services as well, and we think it's really critical for College Park. On fifty-six, we have a number of Six West-related uh requests. The first is um ALTA survey of the, starting off at least with the residential district within the Six West Master Plan. Um, an ALTA survey is basically, ALTA stands for American Land Title Association, and it's a survey that we have not, that the city has not yet commissioned or conducted on any parts of Six West, um, but includes all the easements, public rights away, any additions or deletions in the property. Basically, all the development constraints that any serious developer who is looking at the site is going to want to take a look at, so that when they're planning out their site planning, figuring out their housing mix, their density mix, they're going to want to know ahead of time what it is that they can do. This is going to impact um a lot of the offers that we will see on the site, and it'll also, um, it'll really eliminate um retrade risk, which is basically just that once we're under contract, we don't want to, um, you know, and a developer would go through due diligence. We want to protect ourselves from them um learning something about the property or what they, you know, what they originally envisioned they could do with the site that could have been revealed much earlier on in the process, so we don't get so far down where they then would come back and need to renegotiate some terms. This is a a recommendation that came very strongly from the city's and BIDA's uh real estate disposition broker for Six West, Stream Realty, and we've worked very closely with them as well as Prime Engineering, who's done a lot of work on Six West to prepare a proposal and determine exactly what the need is here. Um, on page fifty-seven of your packet, I'm going to request that this is an item that we reserve to discuss in an executive session, session, um, because it does deal with, directly with real estate matters. Going to go on to fifty-eight. So this is a um strategy and implementation plan for economic development for the entire city. So in the city's strategic, adopted strategic plan, it calls for, says that the city needs to conduct a citywide economic development strategy and implementation plan. Uh, this was never conducted, um, and it's something that we really urgently need as a city um for guiding all of the work that we do within economic development, and probably even more importantly, hearing from the community as to what um what the priority should be for economic development. So this would be a a comprehensive strategy. There's some more information in the booklet about what we would propose in that. Um, but um, that's a real high priority. It's something that is um called for in our currently adopted strategic plan. Going to turn the next one over on fifty-nine to Tasha to discuss.
Thank you. So on page fifty-nine, we have a request for the Godby Road Walking Trail. In two thousand and twenty-two, staff began doing community outreach within the Godby Road, um, Old National and South Side Corridor to inquire what were the needs of the residents or the desires of the residents. One of the things that consistently came out was a need for green space within the South Side community. At that time, we began going after grants as far as to, um, we already have ownership of the property, but to develop this property into a green space. Um, during those assessments with residents, there was a need for uh passive recreation space, um, a request for walking trail as well as a community garden. We were able to receive a donation from Trees Atlanta for fifty-six trees to beautify the property, um, but were not able to receive additional grants to fulfill the full development. We did receive a donation of twelve thousand dollars towards the development of the walking trail and uh passive green space, but due to increased costs um and the um reduction of staff within parks, I'm sorry, within building and grounds, it has left us with a shortfall of thirteen thousand and fifty-eight dollars for this project. I will pass it over to Ben for page sixty.
So on page sixty, you'll see it's the, it's a planning coordinator. So this is another new position um that we're requesting. This is a position that would be administrative in nature, and they would uh provide support across the different divisions within the new Sustainable Development Department, um, but with the parts that are mostly associated with planning and program delivery. So that would be zoning and special projects, grants management for both planning and community development, administrative support for Main Street, uh managing our film permitting process, as well as economic development events planning. Um, as you probably all know, we do have a fantastic administrative assistant within the existing Economic Development Department who is already over capacity, frankly, with all of the different um projects and tasks that she is responsible for managing. By adding this new planning and zoning function within our department, um, it's simply impossible to, we 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 will not have the uh required administrative capacity that we need to support all of the new um divisions that we're adding or the new division that we're adding. So that's um also a pretty high priority for us. Going to turn over on page sixty-one, the Main Street Program Assessment, to Tasha.
Thank you, Ben. So with the Main Street, um, College Park Main Street Association, they are required um to have a biannual, or I guess twice a year, um, not twice a year, but every two years, um, strategic planning session that occurs. One thing that we found that is needed is to receive a SWOT um analysis to see what their strengths and weaknesses are currently, to see if we are going to be on track. So we are requesting um funds to assist with a program assessment. Um, this would be done prior to the um strategic plan that is required through the Department of Community Affairs. And I'll move on to um page number twenty-two, which is in relation to the City Hall, I'm sorry, sixty-two, the City Hall tree planting. So in April of two thousand and twenty-three, um, the historic oak trees were removed in front of City Hall, and since then, um, direction has been given for staff to engage the community for the replacement of the trees and to receive community input. Um, during the community sessions that were held, um, the community has requested as far as to replace those trees. Um, there is a current survey, which will be discussed during workshop this upcoming Monday for that presentation. But additionally, there were issues that were discussed that were not um initially intended, such as the request to beautify City Hall. One of the comments made from residents is that this is our star building and it is located on Main Street, but it has been some time since the landscape was updated, as well as there are some concerns regarding the corner of Princeton and Main Street regarding um the compliance due to landscaping or ADA compliance due to landscaping. So there is a request as related to the trees um of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars, but also the beautification of the landscaping at City Hall totaling nine thousand. And that request was done in conjunction with the um supervisors of Building and Grounds. We'll move on to number sixty-three, and this was a previous request in the last budget cycle. There was a request for forty thousand dollars to um begin a program to help with home rehabilitation assistance, and this would be home rehabilitation and property maintenance, to be able to assist residents um that are seniors, who are um differently abled, and um potentially um veterans as far as to be able to do home uh rehabilitation programs, such as repairing roofs or cutting overgrown property.
So on page sixty-four, you'll see the Six West Marketing Implementation. So this is budget directly related to um activities within a marketing plan for Six West. When when BIDA, uh, when the Development Authority uh entered into a contract with Stream Realty, there was an agreement that the marketing costs um for Six West that are required to sell Six West was going to be shared in some manner with Stream. So Stream was going to provide certain marketing services, and the city would provide certain marketing services. So this budget request um is directly related to those services that the, that BIDA and the city had agreed to um to cover the cost for.
And on page sixty-five, we are requesting additional funding to assist with an update for the downtown design guidelines. Um, recently, there has been complaints coming from citizens as related to the color scheme of the business. Once research was done by staff, we have found that the original um downtown design guideline was created in two thousand and eleven. The last update did occur in two thousand and fifteen, but we did find it to be too broad. So the College Park Main Street Association would like to um to work with a consultant to provide guidelines for the um color scheme in the downtown area. And lastly, it was not um included within the book, but at the last council meeting, there was approval of the contract with the collaborative firm. We are um requesting the additional funding for the increase in, that was previously approved.
On page sixty-six of your packets, we, just two more to go. I know we have, we probably get the award for the most requests, perhaps. Apologies about that. Um, so on page sixty-six, um, you have the Six West Infrastructure Investment Plan. So this is, you know, we really need to update all of the cost estimates for all of the So this is, you know, we really need to update all of the cost estimates for all of the city-funded infrastructure within Six West. So these funding, you know, estimates, I think were probably conducted three or four years ago at this point, they need to be updated. So this includes Columbia Avenue redevelopment, all the parks, other amenities, the cultural center, historic preservation efforts, historic markers, trails, these are all within the Six West Master Plan. They all have cost estimates associated with them, but they're very outdated at this point. And we also, within this plan, need to prioritize by what, what, how we can actually finance these improvements, what can be financed by land sales, and also identify strategic amenities and public state, public space investments that will need to be made within Six West, and a financial plan for how to, how to fund those investments. Finally, on page sixty-seven, so a Six West Master Plan Real Estate. So this is really just about, this would be a request for qualifications that we would issue for a need to update the overall, an overall update and recalibration of all of the data within the development program for the Six West two thousand and twenty Master Plan, all of the data within it. So that's our final budget request within the needs assessment. We'll take any questions.
Councilman Clay.
Okay. Main Street Program, let's see, which is your first page?
Page fifty-five.
Yeah. Don't want to jump too far ahead. Okay. Planning and zoning manager. So what is this left for the collaborative firm to do?
So I'll, I'll take this one. And I, I notice it's going to be a bit of a sensitive issue. But I think it's very important that we bring planning in-house, and maybe at some point in time in College Park's development, it wasn't as critical. We pay a higher rate for a lesser amount of time. So I would be asking the mayor and council, because I'm likely to be recommending disposition. We need a collaborative firm, because we don't have it built in-house, and there may be a need to continue with contractual services going ahead, but I don't believe at the level that we're using now. But when you think about the timeframe, even, even if the mayor and council supported a recommendation, it's likely to come from Maine, we're probably looking at over into next year, and then, in fact, in transitional time. So my hope would be to target the last three months of the fiscal year, April through June, to bring this person onboard, and then we'll figure out for the next budgeting cycle how much we would need to put in for the contractual relationship.
Okay, so we're not going to double count? We're not going, the, the intent is to slow down one and increase the other? Okay, that's good. I mean, some of that could be talked about in an executive session, I suppose, too, but okay. On page, I guess it's fifty-seven, I think sometimes my pages are off by a page or so. Fifty-seven, very definitely should not be discussed here. Page sixty-one, which is a Main Street Program Assessment. This is absolutely necessary. We have to do this. So I don't know, I don't understand why it wasn't in the budget in the first place. I'm on sixty-one, I might be off by a page. The Main Street, Main Street Program Assessment. Yeah, I mean, this is absolute necessity, if we're going to maintain the, the level of Main Street involvement that we have. So I'm good with that. City Hall Tree Planning. A Home Assistance Program. Is this the one, Tasha, I, I can't catch every word. I've got new technology that has improved things significantly, but, and Mercedes is watching it for me. But the thing is, is this the East Point firm that approached us a while back? This is a different firm, right?
Yes, sir. This would be Mission Serve, which is a nonprofit.
That, that's what I thought, because I know somebody in East Point had approached us at one point. It, it sounds like it's doing similar to what they had proposed, I think, helping with home renovation and so forth. Do you have any idea what we'll get for forty thousand dollars? Like, how many houses could you do?
Yes, sir. So at forty thousand dollars, we could do ten houses with a range between two to three roofs, and then the remainder would be a mix of property maintenance, as well as more safety compliance issues. Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good, good. And the Six West Marketing Implementation, I, I still think that's, that's what we were paying Stream to do. So I, I know there's maybe a fine line in there somewhere, but doesn't make sense to me. Downtown Design Guidelines, yeah, we probably could use some help on that. The Six West Infrastructure Investment Plan. I just don't understand, we, we obviously can't talk about them here, but those of us who are involved in either BIDO and/or executive session on council, there are some possible significant changes that could occur in Six West, depending on who, who gets contracted with. So my question would be, how much can we actually do with infrastructure? That infrastructure may change significantly. I mean, we're hoping to keep the same streets in the same places, but we know, we've looked at some things where portions of street disappear. So why would we want to spend a bunch of money to update the infrastructure when we're not even sure whether we're going to use that infrastructure until we actually get some things under contract? That's, that's maybe a rhetorical question. I just question that, the master plan on real estate and real estate, yeah, that's it.
Councilman Carron.
Well, I see a lot of requests here. I understand the concept behind the planning coordinator, so I understand that. The Main Street Program, we want to figure out ways to keep improving there, I guess. Absolutely. Just make sure that assessment goes all the way down into the Roosevelt Highway section of Main Street that was designated as Main Street. In other words, not just the north and south blocks that we do now. The City Hall Tree Planning, now this wasn't the contribution, this is something that we, I thought we budgeted for the tree planting in the budget.
No, sir. This actually, to my knowledge, occurred after, but it was not budgeted through my department, so.
All right. Home Assistant Program, we talked about that over, over two, I think, two budgets. Yeah, the marketing stuff, I would assume, you know, Stream should handle that. So the downtown, the, the design guidelines and the Main Street, I guess those are kind of connected. Could, could we maybe merge that with an outfit that can cover both? Is that possible?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, maybe we can get a few savings there. Yeah, in the infrastructure plans, that's going to be a moving target, so, you know. The master plan, all right, looks good, interesting stuff. Everybody's, there's a lot of asks, there's a lot of asks, so, all right.
Councilman Allen.
The Planning and Zoning Manager and the Planning Coordinator, can you explain, you know, the two differences to me? What, what is each one going to be doing? Or can you combine those?
So the Planning and Zoning Manager, that would be a much higher level management position, so that's, you know, would cover all of the long-range planning functions that a planning department would have. So that's a position that would manage the planning administrator. So the planning administrator or coordinator is an administrative position. So it would provide much more administrative support to different functional areas within the divisions. So it's a lower salary position.
Okay, and, and the only other question, I agree with all the forty thousand and so forth, I think that's, that's money well spent, and of course, the trail, I think, is great, but the, the Six West, and I don't know if I can get into that here, somebody stop me if I get into something I shouldn't be getting into, but, but the Six West, with the completion of the Lottie Miller Road, don't we have some obligations with Jupiter? And Ed, I guess this is a question for you, and I don't know.
So I, I think this is okay to be public. So we have a purchase and sell agreement on Project Jupiter. It was about two years ago, it's three and a half million dollars, and they would have sixty days to close when Lottie Miller was completed up to the first roundabout. That completion date was October the second, and so they had a hundred and ninety-some odd thousand dollars of earnest money. Their earnest money went hard on October the second. So if they don't close, you keep a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. They are required to pay you three and a half million dollars on December the second or lose a hundred and ninety thousand. Now, I don't know whether they will or not, but that's the current contract. Is that correct, Ben?
I believe so.
Okay, so we have possibly three and a half million coming, but for sure, a hundred and ninety thousand coming.
Yes, sir.
That could take care of some of these Six West.
Yes, sir.
That's the only.
And Councilman Allen, we will be meeting with the, the realtor broker and the owner of that property tomorrow as well.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. We're moving on to Building and Property Sustainability.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Manager. I just want you to know that the Building, Property and Sustainability Department is a revenue-producing department. As you can see here on our general fund items, we have licensing permits, fines. So this department, you know, is very concerned about the quality of life for our residents and also our employees, so that we, you know, retain them, and these employees are very in high demand, and with this high demand, we want to increase our numbers so that we can increase our see something, say something approach in regards to violations and crime. Even though we may have fifteen thousand residents, but we have over a thousand that come through our streets every day, and this department's responsibility is to try to maintain that safety. But we do know that, as directors, we make the recommendations, but you all are the ones who get it done for the people, and we appreciate that. On page sixty-eight, I'll go through some of the requests that we have. And the first request is, one of our highest priorities, is the two code enforcement officers. They would be primarily increasing our inspections of, you know, commercial businesses that are licensed and those that are unlicensed. When businesses are not licensed, it impacts our revenue. And so also, when it comes to our family dwelling inspection program and our hotel motel inspection program that we have, we're currently just trying to make sure they have proper staffing for things such as that. It increases, with this increase, it will help in our strategic goal to improve public safety and security for residents and visitors in departments, and this is our department's highest goal. The two additional more officers in this alignment with our goal number one, local economy and growth, and goal number two, quality of life. Eleven point two, development and implement of College Park Beautiful Plan, which includes provisions for better aesthetics and noise reduction. This also helps in our task force sweeps. By having more staffing, we can also increase on our weekend inspection schedules that we have proposed as well. If you go to page sixty-nine, the second request is for twenty thousand dollars for training, that would be in our budget. When we started, when I started here, it was only three of us. Now we pretty much at nine employees. And the state mandates that inspectors and code enforcement officers have training, and this training will get them in line with the most current codes and laws and ordinances that change on the local and state levels. And so these codes change every three years. And so the requirement is that these officers and code enforcement officers be properly trained. The trainees also need to maintain CEU credits, continuing educations, to maintain licensing certifications for our officers and inspectors. If the positions are not funded properly, service delivery for building inspections, plan review, permits, code enforcement team will be impacted. This also aligns with our strategic goal to improve public safety and security for our residents and visitors is the department's highest strategic goal. On page seventy, goes to a third request of ten thousand dollars for office alterations. As I said before, we had started with three in that area, and now we're pretty much at nine. I have about space for one in my office, but currently he has two code enforcement officers that kind of go from a small cubicle to my office to do their job. And so we are, you know, lacking on efficiency in that area. We won't increase the, you know, the, I would say, bandwidth of the area, so it's people, we'll be more efficient with some type of structure as well. Our next request is on page seventy-one, that's ten thousand dollars request, and this is for six tablets, for the inspectors and officers. Our goal is to improve our efficiency and automation. As you know, that we going to approve of a Sage program, technology that interfaces with Wi-Fi and data, and so this would give the officers more live capabilities to get information faster from the field to the system, to the office, to you as well. And so you will have information pretty much at life speed, so to speak. Let's go to page seventy-two, and our next request was abatement and demolition of fifty thousand dollars. You know, currently, this year, we had only ten thousand dollars, and that has been depleted to two recent abatement projects. And these, you know, these projects are very good for each ward, we have four wards, and so this could be divvied up between those wards with a little bit of coverage, and at the, pretty much the quest of the council, the areas that you feel that is most impacted, that we can use that money in your area, this is what's there to be used for. And, and it'll be good, you know, like I said, we make the recommendations, but you get it done. And so this is another opportunity to get things done for the people. And page, and lastly, seventy-three, building inspector. When I got here, there was a company called PON. They were a private company, and they did a really good service for the city. But we know that sometimes having things in-house, you can get a little bit more for your, for your bang for your buck, right? And so hopefully, we have done that. We have hired myself for this position, and we also have a building inspector as well. And what that does is, it's still in line with our goal to improve public safety and security for our residents and visitors. All right, open to any questions if you have.
Councilman Clay?
Okay, I have basically agree with virtually everything you have on here. I did have one question, though. The director, oh, that's true. I thought I had one question in here. Excuse me for a minute. Oh, one thing I have with the abatement and demolition, I think we definitely need to do that. And I think part of our previous experience was that when you actually get ready to do it, sometimes things happen that you don't have to do anything. And that's a good thing. The issue, though, is that just because we have the money allocated, in order to bring down the building, we have to have the proper authority. And I guess my general question to you, not just in that area, but in all the other areas of inspections and the apartment inspection. We know we have an issue with multifamily right now. I mean, it's got to be fixed. But it hasn't been just due to lack of staff or expertise. It's been due to a lack of ordinance. So if you're going to use this money effectively, and I think, I think it's money well spent, very well spent. But if you're going to use it effectively, we've got to have the right teeth in our ordinances in order to bring you to bear and the court to bear and make it happen. So it's not a budget question, it's a legal question. And I don't know, that needs to be answered here specifically. But if you're going to spend this money, then I want to make sure that we are, have, what should I say, done an audit of our ordinances, and they have the adequate teeth to enable you to spend that money and be effective with it. I don't want you spending the money and inspecting the buildings and find out that we can't bring to bear the repair or we can't tear the building down if we want to tear it down and have the money to tear it down. So that's all I have. And that's an action item, I think, City Manager, for you to make sure that our ordinances are keyed up to spend the money that we allocate.
Yes, we will. Mr. Robinson is expert on codes. I know he's studying ours, and we've actually, across departments, already started working with the City Attorney's Office on various code amendments that will be coming forth, including some of the realignment that we're talking about as well.
I would also add to you that this request was made in mind with the current codes that we have. And so one of the codes that we have, a code book, is the International Property Maintenance Code. That code already has the ordinance written in it for emergency procedures. So demolitions and abatement are already there. It's just for us to use currently, as it is. One of the good things about what, you know, what you have already done is with hire me and others now, we're able to use these codes now similar where the other company could have used it, but it's the expertise already there. So this, the answer's already there, we already have the code.
Excellent, excellent.
Councilman Carron?
All right, a lot of stuff we need. The reorganization and the modifications to the ordinances. It's not going to be a one-time thing. I think that's going to be a living, breathing document as we figure out how to raise the bar to the standards where we're supposed to be at, where we can eliminate a lot of this blight, unacceptable things that are allowed to happen in the city overall. So we'll modify fifty percent of all the codes as it pertains to multifamily requirements. But there's another fifty percent that we may have to piecemeal in as we delve deeper into it and so on and so forth, so it's not a one-time hit. It's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of stuff. You mentioned you went from three to nine employees. Now, that wasn't just you going, I guess that was part of your restructuring, right? Ten-four, that's a part of the restructuring with code enforcement and also incoming business license. Okay, all right. And you say you got, so you're asking for two additional ones in addition to the two that you filled, the slots that you filled? Ten-four, yeah, the two positions are really needed, the hotel motel. You want to have a focus. Sometimes with a code enforcement officer, I said, you've got a hundred and fifteen thousand people you're concerned about daily. And in each ward, you could divvy up to, let's say, divvy up the mountain full wards. Well, have a concentration where you can call someone and say, hey, Officer Johnny knows about hotels better than anybody. That's what we're looking for. We want someone that knows everything about the multifamily. That's what they do all day, every single day. And as you know, in me, in your ward, sir, that seventy percent of the people that live in your ward are in a multifamily. And so we want to make sure that we concentrate on areas where the need is greater. Well, yeah, and, I mean, that's not just my ward. Seventy, over seventy percent of the city is multifamily. So it's not just me, believe me. I have mostly overwhelmingly multifamily, but that's citywide. Yeah, there are a lot of things we need to work on and fix. We had talked at one point about a hotel motel specialist. We've talked for a couple of years about an apartment specialist. Ambrose had referred to that person as an apartment czar. Not exactly the phrase I would use, but I get, we need that. Now, part of you coming in here is part of that czarmanship. I guess you could call it, that's an actual word. So we definitely want to crack down on that. I think that's a priority in terms of fixing a lot of things with public safety, parks and rec, public works. I mean, it's going to help with a lot of things there. So it's a lot of asks. I don't know if you're going to get it all. I don't know if anybody's going to get it all. But we're going to do what we can and, you know, great job. City Manager, I want to just tell you, this was a top-notch presentation, well put together, well thought out, and everybody got their input in. And, you know, everybody's got a Christmas wish list. And communication, it's so rare that we get to meet and talk to the entire staff, whereas we used to do that, you know, twice a month. But it's important, it's important, so, great job.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, and the only question I have is the building inspector. And is that an offset, Althea? It looks like a hundred and four thousand, and it's offset to seventy-eight. Is that correct?
Well, we recently brought on board the building inspector position. There was a position there, but it wasn't budgeted for. So what the costs you see now is what it will cost to fund that position for the remainder of the year. But the annual cost is what it will cost on an annual basis. But it was not budgeted at all for fiscal year 2024, but the position existed.
Do we know how much money we're spending for inspections now? I mean, to off, you know, we'll save that money that we're spending now with contractor, but, you know, we would be adding a person.
There wasn't any funding for Pond's. There was funding for the apartment contractual side of it, as far as the apartment inspections. We did use a considerable amount of the budget, so I don't think there will be an offset. I don't think it'll be a significant.
No, I just didn't know if it was counted in there, okay.
No, that was, that's the true cost.
No, and I do like the additional people, so I think that's needed to hold people accountable. It's been too long. That's all I have.
All right, so we have come to the conclusion of all the departments. I do want to thank the entire community building leadership team for all of your efforts in this discussion. As we move forward, to me, this information seems a little incomplete in that we're talking about asks, but we don't know where the money's coming from. And I think through the first quarter of fiscal '24, we've had positions that haven't been filled. And so there may be savings to be had there or opportunities for grants for some of these. I was just looking at opportunities for grants for demolitions, and those types of things are out there. So I agree with my colleagues that there are a lot of asks. I would urge, as we move forward in this conversation, to ensure that we talk about the funding sources. Because are we reallocating from other funds? Are we looking at enterprise funds? Are we, I think, are we looking at fees? I don't know. This is, and plus, some of these things are, we have a net cost, but they don't, it doesn't tell the whole story if we're reallocating from department to department. So to me, we need a fuller picture to understand the overall impact to the city and the finances. But I think this is a good conversation to start. Anything you want to add, Mr. Hawthorne?
Yes, I want to thank, as you did, Mayor, the community building leadership team. I couldn't be prouder of you and your teams for bringing this together. There's been a lot of extra work. Mayor and Council, you obviously did your homework coming in. We got through a schedule pretty efficiently, so I'm proud of you all as well. And thank you for listening to us. I think the mayor is absolutely correct. We were kind of pushed to get it to this place, but staff has done their work this weekend. I've got a lot of work to do. The lists that you see by Monday will be very different. It will include my recommendations, but it will include the assessment that the mayor has said that we need. I fully agree. So the numbers as they appear will be different because we need to take into account all available resources. And we will be creative, and I'll be working with Althea and Ed, and I'll look forward to the second part of this coming up by your next meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawthorne. Mr. Wall?
You seem to hesitate. So, Mr. Hawthorne, you know, movies have trailers, and you get to watch the trailer and see if you want to watch the movie. Can you give us a trailer as what your recommendation is going to be? Just a hint?
You know, I've been doing this for a long time, and Tykes Village is easy. Based on the numbers that you gave, I can do a cursory review at these requests and even some of the questions that have come up today. I believe my recommendations will be a fraction of the cost that are shown. And then when we look at other funding sources, potential savings, being careful of one-time costs versus recurring costs. I believe we'll be able to accomplish a lot. May not be the full amounts that are requested in some cases, but I believe we'll be able to make a big dent without impacting our residents and if we can, our neighbors, if we can give them some relief. That is at the top of my list. But I have a theory, and I shared this with the staff at our staff meeting this week. Our community, I will tell you, they want the best. And we hear the complaints, we hear the issues. And if you say to them that this is the mileage rate, and whether we increase it or reduce it, and if they have to look forward to the status quo, you may very well hear, we don't want to pay more, we want to pay less. What we've got to deliver on is helping College Park to achieve its very best. I'm not here for the status quo. The status quo might have been before my assessment, okay. The status quo does not improve this community. And a community wants best, the highest quality of life. And if we can deliver on it and earn their trust, they'll look at their tax situation very differently. The proof has been shown, when you bring critical issues to a community and you say, this is what we're offering you, better parks, reliable fire rescue services, strong public safety from an all-enforcement standpoint, they will support it because they want the best. So that's my proposition to you. Look at it from the standpoint, if you're a new city manager who you need to hold accountable to deliver, if we don't invest in the resources, we can't deliver. But all of that will be taken into account in my recommendations.
Thank you very much. It is five forty-seven, and we are adjourned.